Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors meeting for May 19, 2015. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Supervisor Avalos.
Here.
Avalos, present. President Breed.
Here.
Breed, present. Supervisor Campos.
Present.
Campos, present. Supervisor Christensen. Christensen not present. Supervisor Cohen. Cohen, present. Supervisor Farrell.
Present.
Farrell, present. Supervisor Kim. Kim not present. Supervisor Maher. Maher, present. Supervisor Tang.
Present.
Tang, present. Supervisor Weiner. Weiner, present. Supervisor Yi. Yi, present. Madam President, you have a quorum.
Ladies and gentlemen, can you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
Yes, Madam President. We are in receipt of a communication from the Office of Supervisor Jane Kim dated April 18th, May 18th, stating the supervisor will be out of town in request that the members excuse her from the meeting today.
Colleagues, is there a motion to excuse Supervisor Kim, motioned by Supervisor Campos, seconded by Supervisor Yi? Without objection, Supervisor Kim is excused. Colleagues, are there any changes to the April 14th board minutes, meeting minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motioned by Supervisor Maher, seconded by Supervisor Campos. Those meeting, those minutes are, will be approved unanimously after public comment. Madam Clerk, can you please read the consent agenda?
Items 1 through 7 comprise the consent calendar. These items are considered routine. If a member objects, an item may be removed and considered separately.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On items 1 through 7, Supervisor Farrell.
Aye.
Farrell, aye. Supervisor Kim is excused. Supervisor Maher.
Aye.
Maher, aye. Supervisor Tang.
Aye.
Tang, aye. Supervisor Weiner.
Weiner, aye.
Supervisor Yi.
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Avalos.
Aye.
Avalos, aye. Supervisor Breed.
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Campos.
Aye.
Campos, aye. Supervisor Christensen.
Aye.
Christensen, aye. Supervisor Cohen.
Aye.
Cohen, aye. There are 10 ayes.
These items are passed and approved unanimously. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Item 8 is a resolution to approve an amended report of assessment costs submitted by Public Works for inspection and/or repair of blighted properties.
Okay, it's my understanding that Supervisor, one second, okay. Colleagues, can we skip over this item and return to it later on in our agenda? Without objection, we'll skip over this item and go to item number 9.
Item 9 is an ordinance to deappropriate approximately 9.6 million from permanent salaries, fringe benefit expenses, and power for resale and appropriate 9.6 million to overtime in the Sheriff's Department, the Department of Emergency Management, the Fire Department, Department of Public Health, and the Public Utilities Commission's operating budgets to support the department's projected increases in overtime and placing approximately 92,000 of the sheriff's appropriation on Controller's Reserve. This ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of all members of the board for approval of the 105,000 to the Public Utilities Commission.
Colleagues, can we take item 9? Same house, same call. Without objection, this ordinance is finally passed unanimously. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is an ordinance to authorize the Public Utilities Commission to use pro forma agreements to purchase and sell electricity and related products and services to operate the city's municipal electric utility and community choice aggregation program.
Colleagues, can we take this item? Same house, same call. Without objection, this ordinance is finally passed unanimously. Item 11, please.
Item 11 is an ordinance to appropriate 1.75 million from wastewater enterprise funds designated for general reserve in the department's budget to pay claim settlements, legal expenses, and related costs due to the extraordinary expenses incurred as a result of the December 2014 storms in fiscal year 2014-15.
Same house, same call. Without objection, this ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Item 12, please.
Item 12, resolution to retroactively authorize the Department of the Environment to accept and expend a $1.3 million grant from the U.S. Department of Energy to develop plans in multiple neighborhoods to develop solar energy with energy storage for post-disaster preparedness for the term of December 15, 2014, through December 31, 2016.
Same house, same call. Without objection, this resolution is adopted unanimously. Item 13, please.
Item 13 is a resolution to retroactively authorize the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Agency to execute a commercial lease agreement with Le Jolene USA Inc. and Osman Unair for approximately 5.1 million at 44 Ella Street for a tenure term to commence on March 1st, 2015.
Same house, same call. Without objection, this resolution is adopted unanimously. Item 14, please.
Item 14 is a motion to provide a status update on the Board of Supervisors' responses to recommendations number 3 and 12B contained in the 2013-14 Civil Grand Jury Report entitled Rising Sea Levels at Our Doorstep.
Same house, same call. Without objection, this motion is approved unanimously. Item number 15.
Item 15 is an ordinance to amend the planning code to require that certain uses obtain conditional use authorization for the Castro Street Neighborhood Commercial District, the 24th Street Noe Valley Neighborhood Commercial District, the Upper Market Neighborhood Commercial Transit District, and in the moderate-scale Neighborhood Commercial Transit District for parcels on Market Street west of Octavia Boulevard, and affirming the planning department's determination under the California Environmental Quality Act and making the required findings.
Supervisor Weiner.
Thank you, Madam President. And colleagues, this legislation will help our commercial corridors in the Castro Upper Market and Noe Valley remain vibrant and active places. The legislation requires that if someone wishes to put an office use on the ground-floor commercial spaces on 24th Street, Castro Street, Upper Market, that they will be required to obtain a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. We know that our commercial corridors are at their best when the retail spaces are occupied by active retail and similar uses. When office uses begin to go into these ground-floor commercial spaces, eventually you hit a tipping point where you have too many uses, too many businesses that are not open at night, that are not open at the weekend, that are not particularly active uses. So we're not, through this legislation, banning the placement of offices, whether it's just any kind of office or a real estate office or a title company. We're not banning those uses on ground-floor retail, but we are requiring that a conditional use be obtained. This will allow us to achieve a balance and to make sure that our commercial corridors are as vibrant and active as possible, and so I ask for your support.
Thank you, Supervisor Weiner. Colleagues, can we take this item? Same house, same call. Without objection, this ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Madam Clerk, can you call item number 16?
Item 16 is an ordinance to amend the planning code to change the designation of the Western Manufacturing Company Building at 149 through 155 Ninth Street from category 5 unrated to a category 3 contributory under Planning Code Article 11 and making the required findings.
Same house, same call. Without objection, this ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Item number 17, please.
Item 17, ordinance to suspend the Public Works Code Section 184.78, the cost for banner fees for up to four banners to be placed by the Lawton Alternative School to publicize Lawton selection as a California distinguished school.
Same house, same call. Without objection, this ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Madam Clerk, can we please go back to item number 8?
Item number 8 has been called. It is the report of assessment costs for blighted properties.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Supervisor Christensen.
Thank you, Madam President. We believe that there could have been some language issues, some other miscommunication regarding these two properties. We are in contact with the property owners, and we believe that we've reached an agreement that will satisfy both Public Works and the property owners. So I'd like to make a motion that we table this item and also mention that we appreciate very much Public Works' agreement to work with us on language outreach on these sometimes very complicated notices, and we look forward to trying to make sure that we can streamline this process in the future to avoid any future misunderstanding.
Okay, so Supervisor Christensen has made a motion to table this item. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Cohen. Colleagues, can we take this item without objection to table this item number 8? Without objection, item number 8 is tabled unanimously. Okay, we're going to skip over our 3:00 PM and 3:30 PM commendations and go to roll call for introductions.
Supervisor Farrell, you are first to introduce new business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, I have one item today, and that's introducing a resolution to recognize and support their first annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day on June 2, 2015, to bring attention to the 88 Americans stolen by gun violence every day here in our country. This resolution also encourages everyone to wear orange on June 2, 2015. It's giant season, so it shouldn't be much of a problem here, to commemorate National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Why orange and why June 2? Many of you have heard of the tragic story of Hadia Pendleton. She was a high school student from the south side of Chicago who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade as a majorette for her high school band, and just one week later, she was shot in the back and killed while standing with friends inside a park in Chicago after taking her final exams. Soon after this tragedy, her friends asked their classmates to commemorate her life and the lives of hundreds claimed by Chicago's gun violence every year by wearing orange, because hunters wear the color orange to warn others not to shoot. Their message was clear. By wearing orange, they said they were showing others they didn't wish to be gunned down in their own cities. June 2 of this year would have been Hadia's 18th birthday. In coordination with her family, Every Town for Gun Safety, a national movement of Americans working to end gun violence and build safer communities, has asked people nationwide to honor her life, her friend's call to action, and those Americans stolen by gun violence every day and every year here in America. As of today, we've had 20 homicides in the city of San Francisco this year in 2015, 14 by gunfire, one of those, of course, being the tragic shooting of Maria Sosa in front of her three children in Bayview on January 27. It continues to take away too many lives here in San Francisco, and gun violence, I know, is on top of all of our minds. I was proud to support Supervisor Cohen's resolution establishing the Gun Violence Prevention Task Force in February, and I commend her continued work in this area, and want to thank her for co-sponsoring the resolution today. The rest, I submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Farrell. Supervisor Maher.
Thank you. Colleagues, please join me Sunday, May 31, not this Sunday, but next Sunday, from 10 to 5:00 PM, for celebrating the 75 years of the San Francisco Botanical Garden, also known as its driving arboretum, our city's arboretum. I will be there with many Richmond and Sunset residents who are among some of the most frequent visitors for our arboretum, and many of the residents from around the park contribute their time as volunteers. Well over 40,000 hours were contributed to almost every facet of the garden's operations over the past year, and the arboretum has always been a cherished resource for our local schools as well. The arboretum's youth education program serves more than 12,000 children annually, including almost every public elementary and K-8 school in the city. For over 75 years, the gardens become a special neighborhood treasure. If you want more information, go to sfbotanicalgardens.org. I also wanted to say that the 75th Anniversary Community Day is totally free. It's from 10 to 5:00, Sunday, May 31, and they're also, the Botanical Gardens also celebrating their garden feast this coming Thursday, May 28, as well. So congratulations to the arboretum, our botanical garden in San Francisco, and all the many people over the years from many neighborhoods that have supported it. The rest, I'll submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Maher. Supervisor Tang.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So today, I am thrilled to be joined by my colleagues, many of them, to submit a charter amendment for this November. I would like to thank my cosponsors, first of all, all of our female colleagues here, Supervisors London Breed, Supervisor Amelia Cohen, Julie Christensen, Jane Kim, as well as Supervisor Scott Weiner, Mark Farrell, Norm Neay, and Supervisor Avalos. Happy to seek additional cosponsors as well. The charter amendment that I'm introducing today enhances our city's paid parental leave law, which is actually the most comprehensive one in our nation. Recognizing the importance of investing in our families after the birth, adoption, or fostering of a child, San Francisco voters supported a ballot measure in 2002 which created our city's first paid parental leave program. Under our current paid parental leave program, city and county of San Francisco employees receive 12 weeks, or if the employees are temporarily disabled by pregnancy, up to 16 weeks of paid parental leave after the birth, adoption, or fostering of a child. And this program supplements state disability insurance payments, paid sick leave, compensatory time, and other forms of paid leave. And although San Francisco has the strongest paid parental leave program in the country, there definitely remains opportunities for us to strengthen our policy to ensure that it is the most effective in supporting our families. So the charter amendment I am submitting today would amend our program in two following ways. One, it would allow city workers to keep 40 hours of sick time on the books when they start taking paid time off. Currently, city workers must exhaust all sick time and vacation time before beginning their paid time off, and this change would allow parents to address any child's health-related needs once they return to work, as well as if they have any health-related needs themselves. And secondly, if there are two city workers in the same family, each would be entitled to their equal share of the benefits. Currently, if there are two city workers in the same family, they must actually split the benefits. So for example, if one partner takes four weeks off, then the second partner only gets the remaining eight weeks of paid time off. So San Francisco, we are certainly ahead of the curve. For example, it was only this January that President Obama announced a new six-week paid leave program for federal workers. Same with the city of Boston this month, which just established its first program this, again, this in May. Also six weeks for municipal employees who have worked for the city for one year. Washington, D.C. offers its city employees, or sorry, municipal employees, eight weeks, while Chicago offers six weeks and Philadelphia, four weeks. However, I was really inspired to take on this issue of enhancing our paid parental leave policies after learning that there are actually even more family-friendly paid leave programs offered by other countries. Denmark is a highly cited example, offering one full year of paid maternity leave for new moms. The private sector has also certainly recognized the benefits of paid parental leave and have begun to lead the way. For example, Google saw their rate of new moms leaving their jobs fall by 50% when they expanded their paid maternity leave from 12 weeks to 18 weeks in 2007. And then Ernst &amp; Young is a company that has certainly paved the way, offering 39 weeks of paid maternity leave, and when parents return to work, they provide childcare vouchers for 12 months upon return from maternity leave. So as, this is the first part of my, the charter amendment that I'm submitting today is part one of my effort. The second phase of my effort is that I'm actually starting a collaborative paid parental leave task force to engage in a year-long process to explore additional changes to improve our city's paid parental leave policy. So they will explore ideas such as, but not limited to, extending the city's paid leave program beyond 12 weeks, for example, potentially to six months, and expanding the program to non-municipal employees. So I'd like to thank our partners who have already committed to participating in this discussion and the task force effort. We have the Department of Labor's Women's Bureau, the Department on Status of Women, Department of Children, Youth, and Their Families, First 5 San Francisco, Department of Human Resources, our Controller's Office, the San Francisco Family Support Network, the Healthy Mothers Workplace Coalition, UC Hastings Center for Work-Life Law, and of course, our private partners who have set a great example so far. We have San Francisco's very own, The Gap, and Google. And so as we continue to lead the nation with our paid parental leave policy, my goal is really to put us on par with the rest of the world and set a good example for everyone across industries. According to a 2014 report from the United Nations Institute of Labor, there are 98 countries that offer paid leave for 14 weeks or more, and a 2013 Pew Research Center report analyzing 38 countries found that the median amount of full paid time off for new mothers was five to six months. And the health benefits, of course, studies have shown that the health benefits of paid parental leave programs for children and their parents, such as increased bonding, breastfeeding time, increased likelihood of going to regular doctor's checkups, and decreased risk of postpartum depression, are all benefits, again, of paid parental leave programs. So I thank all my cosponsors for joining me in this effort, and I look forward to working with our partners on this issue in the coming year. And then the second item that I have today that I'm introducing is legislation that would allow animal control officers to waive adoption fees and other applicable charges. Currently, ACC, our Department of Animal Care and Control, can only waive adoption fees if they receive funding to do so. For example, during Matty's Pet Adoption Days, which occur one weekend every May, Matty's Fund will give participating shelters from $200 to $2,500 for each pet adopted, and the funding will cover adoption fees as well as provide extra funding to enable shelters and rescue groups to save and treat more animals. Unfortunately, this is the last year that Matty's Fund will sponsor the event, and so outside of this event or other donations, ACC cannot waive their fees. So that's why we have this legislation we're introducing today, and it would allow ACC to follow the common industry practice by allowing animal control officers to reduce or waive the adoption fees and other charges when the reduction or waiver will maintain or increase the live release rate of animals. In August, Animal Care and Control is planning to partner with NBC and Telemundo for the Empty the Shelter Day program, where 30 shelters throughout the Bay Area will waive adoption fees in an effort to find homes for hundreds of pets. So we really look forward to giving ACC this flexibility. We know that it will allow them to take advantage of more opportunities to house our homeless pets. And the rest, I submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Tang. Supervisor Weiner.
Submit.
Supervisor Yi.
Submit.
Supervisor Avalos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, last month, I introduced an ordinance to clarify that the inclusionary affordable housing program applies to group housing projects, and today, I'm introducing a substitute piece of legislation to ensure that no more group housing projects that are able to slip through the Planning Commission without meeting their inclusionary housing requirements. When the ordinance goes into effect, it will apply to all projects that haven't received a first construction permit by today, May 19. Since the inclusionary housing program was created in 2002, it was always intended to apply to group housing, but at some point, the planning department made an unofficial determination that group housing was not subject to the inclusionary program, and recently, developers have proposed a number of market-rate group housing projects. Recently also, members of the Planning Commission have expressed concerns that group housing is being used as a technical loophole around the inclusionary requirement. This ordinance that I'm re-submitting today will make sure that we close this technical loophole as soon as possible, and I urge the Planning Commission to delay hearing the permits of any new group housing projects without inclusionary housing until we actually move forward with this legislation. The rest, I'll submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Avalos. Supervisor Cohen.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, today, I'm introducing a number of items. The first is a draft and request to the City Attorney's Office to prepare legislation that will require both the San Francisco Police Department and the Sheriff's Department to expand not only the type of information that is collected and recorded, but also when it is collected. So for example, here are some facts. African-American men, we know, are arrested for drug crimes 19 times more often than other races in San Francisco. We also know that African-American women in San Francisco face an arrest rate 13 times higher than women of any other race. Overall, African-American San Franciscans are arrested 7.3 times more often than other cities in the state of California. So this legislation that I'm requesting will require the name, age, race, gender, and gender identity to be collected, not only during traffic stops, but also anytime either the department detains, stops, or stops for questioning, or will search an individual. This information collected will also include whether the stop involved a vehicle search or a pat-down or search of an individual, the name and badge number of all officers involved, the result of the contact. So for example, was an arrest made? Was a citation given? Was a warning given? Is there an incident report? Or no action will be taken. So similar data is already collected in Oakland, New York, and San Jose is working towards similar reporting requirements. With this reporting requirement, I hope to quell some of the unintentional disproportionate numbers of arrests and targeting we see of minorities and of the transgendered community. We are injecting additional oversight on the SFPD by making this information public and requiring reporting to the mayor's office as well as to the Board of Supervisors. I'm also equally as excited to introduce a resolution of intent to form the city's first-ever Green Benefits District in Dogpatch and Northwest Potrero Hill. Now, what is a Green Benefit District, you might be asking yourself? Well, let me tell you. A few years ago, I began working with a group of dedicated neighbors and property owners on creative solutions to fund open space improvements and maintenance in our growing eastern neighborhoods. And at the same time, I worked to pass legislation which would establish the process for which residential and commercial property owners can voluntarily assess themselves to pay for improving and creating public parks as well as open space. Now, this model is nearly identical to our city's process for forming a community benefits district and business improvement districts. But this is the first time both residential and commercial property owners are participating in an assessment district, and these funds can be used for a wider variety of services such as graffiti removal, capital improvements, to the public right-of-way, tree planting, and overall park maintenance. You've heard me, many, me, many times, and again, discussing the challenges that we are facing, funding and prioritizing new infrastructure improvements in the eastern neighborhoods, which we all know is rapidly developing. This is one creative strategy where both the city and the neighbors are taking up the challenge to create and maintain desperately needed public realm and park improvements. I've already heard from a number of other neighborhood groups across the city who are looking to form something similar and are modeling their proposals after the work that has been done in the Dogpatch and Northwest Potrero Hill. I want to compliment the neighbors for their organizing and their advocacy. We could not have gotten this far without their help, and I also want to recognize key department heads that have been really helpful in helping us get this established, persons in DPW, the City Attorney's Office, as well as in Wrenken Park. So colleagues, I look forward to hearing, to a hearing on these items at committee and advancing the formation of our city's first Green Benefits District. Madam Clerk, Madam President, the rest, I submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cohen. Madam President, seeing no other names on the roster, that concludes the introduction of new business.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please read public comment?
At this time, the public may comment generally for up to two minutes on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, to include the minutes and the items on the adoption without reference to committee calendar, items 28 through 33. Please note that public comment is not allowed on items that have been subject to public comment out of board committee. Pursuant to Board Rule 4.22, direct your remarks to the board as a whole, not to individual supervisors nor to the audience. And speakers using translation assistance will be allowed twice the amount of time to testify. If you would like a document to be displayed on the overhead projector, please clearly state such to SFG TV and then remove the document when the screen should return to live coverage of the meeting.
First speaker, please.
Thank you, President Breed and other victims of the cabal. My name is Christopher Dahl, and I live at 6th and Howard, currently 10 blocks and 14 meters from sea level. I rise to comment on the immoral fallout from 21st century technology. Within the past week, the BBC has reported that Chinese researchers have announced that they have successfully edited bad genes out of an otherwise non-viable human fetus and replaced them with good genes. Whether this is immediately doable with a viable fetus is not stated, but I have no doubt they will try, and I have no doubt they will eventually succeed. DNA is just a sequence of letters in a document, and functionally, it is just as easy to edit as that document. Click, cut, click, paste. The uproar is already in progress, members. The war is between the irresistible lust for life and the immovable certainties of the mind. You can't do this, some say. We must do this, the researchers say. If we have a problem and a technique that can fix it, then we are morally obligated to try. I understand this argument. I feel this argument. I only wish you did. You had been notified of a technique to cheaply monitor all vehicular traffic. You have been notified of the death of a 12-year-old boy brought about by your failure to pursue any implementation of this or other useful techniques. And before you object to my laying this death to your negligent hands, I note that automated collision avoidance systems have been available to the public on automobiles for years. Why aren't they on muni trains? Thank you, President Breed.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. We should show as much concern for those that died in wars on Memorial Day as we do for fun and games on Beta Breakers. This is Williams' composition from the 40s. "Far Away From Friends and Loved Ones Mid the Storm a Soul Jelay. Gather round where all his buddies raised his head and heard him say. There's a lamplight on the window where an angel from above gently rocks my baby's cradle with such tender care and love. Mother dearest darling mother, it would ease this awful pain if she'd sing, 'Until I'm Sleeping Rock My Cradle Once Again.' Mid the palms tonight he's sleeping on an island far away. Though the years pass on in sorrow, I still recall these words today. There's a lamplight in a window where an angel from above gently rocks my baby's cradle with such tender care and love. Mother dearest darling mother, it would ease this awful pain if she'd sing, 'Until I'm Sleeping Rock My Cradle Once Again.'" Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Now, we only live so long before we die. We only live a certain amount of days before we die. We only can make a certain amount of money before we die. Tomorrow is 7,000 days from the Jubilee Year. And I got through to Tom Evans on Family Radio. He took Harold Camping's place, and I was trying to convince him to start up the open forum once again. And I disagreed with Mr. Camping on his Jubilee years. And Tom's starting to come around to my view, which is actually the biblical view. Now, the Dead Sea Scrolls talk about the 70 weeks of Daniel 9, which is 490 years, and they embellish it by saying that that was 10 Jubilees. If we know that Christ was baptized seven years before the Jubilee Year ended, and we do, and if we know it was 29 AD, and we do, then we can certainly know when the Jubilee Year is. Jesus was about 30 years old when he began his ministry and was baptized, and they were about at the 30th Jubilee. As a matter of fact, they were precisely seven years before the 30th Jubilee. So when I say March 21st, 1996 began the 70th Jubilee Year, it's quite easy to determine that I'm correct. Now, we had two things happen at that particular time. The times of the Gentiles ended. This was foreshadowed when King Nebuchadnezzar of Babylon went crazy for 2,520 days. And if you go a day for a year, you would have 36 70s, or we more properly should understand it, 360 sabbatical cycles. It's quite simple. This is a perfect number. It's called the king of numbers because it's divisible by 1 through 10. And believe it or not, I know you're looking at me like you're crazy, like I'm crazy, but look, you know, you're 50 years old, okay? You're old, like me. I'm 58. We're going to die soon, okay? We're going to face God. And you can't get away from Him. You know, some people say, well, you know, all religions...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Corporate buses, two months become accessible. Big fines. I hope that comes in a moment of time. You know, these corporate buses for 5 to 10 million, they can buy 10 buses and lease them to the drivers. Muni is commons. It's illegal to do anything but muni at these commons. And the muni drivers would appreciate if the corporate buses would pull forward into the bus stop so that they can pull behind them and not wait across the intersection and wait for the bus to pull out. A little common courtesy there. Insured licensed safety standards regulated, one price for all, uniform price, professional drivers being devoid by Uber and whatnots. We need to protect our taxis. We've got, last year we had 69 of them that were accessible to vans, to wheelchairs. We're going to lose our taxis, so hmm, I don't want that to happen. Muni. I'm hesitant about removing seats. It's a long ride from the avenues into the city. Old people are old people. I don't think we should do that. Paratransit always needs a little refinement and development. Avenue shuttles to get those long blocks to a main line, is that possible? Buses, new remodeled. Heating systems that make more noise than heat. What's the most rattling bus we have? We can make an app and a contest and let them ride up on the eastern side of Van Ness and see which one is the best rattling bus of, and the worst rattling bus. Use the elevators, especially at Civic. And the people out there in the society that uses our stuff, use the elevators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Madam President, my name is Otto Duffy. I'm a North of Market neighborhood activist. I actually live in the North of Market. I, years ago, I lived in group housing for a couple of years. It was actually bona fide group housing. There was a full kitchen, shared kitchen facilities. There was a shared lobby area, a TV area, large spacious bathrooms. Well, not large, but spacious bathrooms sufficient. I'm not sure how you would make that housing nowadays. The building I lived in, the cooperative that it was operated under eventually collapsed, but now it's transitional youth housing, so it's still there. It's still being used. I don't know how you would use it for the general population. I'm not sure. I just don't think it's right that a company is just using this group housing to skirt the inclusionary housing costs, to create substandard unis that are incomplete and small. That's not, I don't see how that would be the right thing to do.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the board. My name is Jason Washington. I'm a resident of Oakland, and I'm enjoying my visit to San Francisco today. If you would be so patient with me, I would just simply like to comment on the previous motion that was brought forth by Madam Supervisor. I believe it's irrefutable to contest that there are, in fact, members of the African-American community who are also members of the lesbian, bisexual, gay, and transgendered community. Nevertheless, I've seen a trend happening inside of many chambers where they associate this plight and struggle that African-Americans have obviously gone through with the transgendered community. And I would like to disassociate, if I may, on three grounds. The first ground is one. The initial civil rights movement, which was spearheaded by several courageous African-Americans inside of the 1950s and 1960s, was a result of tedious and detrimental and fierce oppression that we had endured for several centuries, well, yes, I can say several centuries, and several generations. Our brothers and sisters inside of lesbian, gay, and transgendered community have not experienced that, that I know of. Second of all, we had no closet to hide into. You can obviously see that I'm a member of the African-American community proudly. Unfortunately, there was no closeted African-Americans. We were obviously African-Americans, and we were subject to that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to provide public comment?
Patricia Voy about the MTA. I think we need to look at this very closely and see if we have a department of the city that may be out of control. I'm seeing cookie-cutter decisions that are being made for all neighborhoods that might not be right for one or two neighborhoods or other things like that. I think we better look at, do we, how do we be able to handle the fact that the MTA has no one that can overrule them? I think we need to look at that legislation and see if we can modify it to make it better for this city. And I've heard from Polk Street, I've heard from all over the city now, they're very upset with these plans they're pulling for the neighborhoods. This isn't just one neighborhood. This is multiple neighborhoods. And we want to, we need to really decide what is right for the city, for the neighborhood character, the economic development of our different neighborhood districts. We're seeing the Planning Department, if you walk in, they say you can't do something that blends in with the neighborhood. You have to do a modern building. Someplace modern buildings work, and someplace they don't. If anybody wants to see one that doesn't, go down Surfante's Avenue in San Francisco. But I would look at the MTA and the Planning Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Supervisors. I hope you liked the Beta Breakers. It was like, "Nowhere to run, nowhere to hide from those costumes. Nowhere to run, nowhere to hide from your costumes, baby. Every step I take, victory I seek. And I'll meet you at the ocean beach on the cover of sports week. Nowhere to run, nowhere to hide from the city. Nowhere to run, nowhere to hide." If you're going to San Francisco, be sure to wear some flowers in your hair. If you're going to San Francisco, you're gonna meet some gentle people there. Everything to do with strange vibration, people in motion, and they're running all to the ocean. For those who run, the Beta Breakers is San Francisco. Summertime will be a lovin' there. If you're going to San Francisco, summertime will be a carin' and lovin' there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to provide public comment at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Madam Clerk, can you please read the Adoption Without Committee Reference?
Items 28 through 33 are being considered for immediate adoption without committee reference. A single roll call vote may enact these items. If a member objects, a matter may be removed and considered separately.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On items 28 through 33, Supervisor Farrell. Farrell, aye. Supervisor Marr.
Aye.
Marr, aye. Supervisor Tang.
Aye.
Tang, aye. Supervisor Weiner.
Aye.
Weiner, aye. Supervisor Yi.
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Avalos.
Aye.
Avalos, aye. Supervisor Breed.
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Campos.
Aye.
Campos, aye. Supervisor Christensen.
Aye.
Christensen, aye. Supervisor Cohen.
Aye.
Cohen, aye. There are 10 ayes.
Those items are adopted unanimously. Okay, colleagues, we are pretty much done with our agenda, but we are not at a point where we can call either our 3:00 PM special order or our 3:30 PM commendation. So at this time, I am going to recess the meeting until 3:00 PM. Okay, colleagues, we are back from recess. It is now 3 o'clock PM, time for our first 3:00 PM special order. Colleagues, before us, we have an appeal of SEQA categorical exemption for the project located at 2251 Greenwich Street, Fire Station Number 16 in District 2. Madam Clerk, can you please call items 18 through 21?
Items 18 through 21 comprise the special order at 3:00 PM for a public hearing of persons interested in the appeal of categorical exemption from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act issued by the Planning Department on June 2nd, 2014 for the proposed project located at 2251 Greenwich Street. Items 19 through 21 are the motions affirming and reversing the department's exemption determination. Item 21 is the motion directing the preparation of findings reversing the determination.
Okay, colleagues, for this hearing, we will be considering the adequacy, accuracy, and sufficiency and completeness of the Planning Department's determination that the proposed project at 2251 Greenwich Street is categorically exempt from environmental review under SEQA. Without objection, colleagues, we will proceed as follows. Up to 10 minutes for a presentation by the appellant or the appellant's representative. Up to two minutes per speaker in support of the appeal. Up to 10 minutes for a presentation from the Planning Department. Up to 10 minutes for the project sponsor or their representative. Up to two minutes per speaker in opposition to the appeal. And finally, up to three minutes for rebuttal by the appellant or the appellant representative. So colleagues, are there any objections to proceeding in this way? Seeing none, we will begin the hearing. So first up, we have the appellant or the appellant representative. You will have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, President Breed and distinguished members of the board. My name is Steve Williams, and I represent the appellants, who are the immediate adjacent neighbors of this proposed project. First, just let me start by saying that the neighbors have a wonderful relationship with the firefighters. And this is not about any opposition to having a neighbor that's a firehouse or even the reconstruction of the firehouse. It may surprise the board to learn that this is the first hearing today, the very first public hearing, which the neighbors have been afforded any opportunity to attend. Usually by the time a project gets up here to the Board of Supervisors, it's been fully vetted. The Planning Commission has heard it, or the Board of Appeals, or the Historic Preservation Commission, or the Building Inspection Commission, some other public review body. Not in this case. Because this is a public building, there's only one form for review of the project before a permit issues, and that is at the Arts Commission. This project was on the Arts Commission's agenda four different times, including its final review and approval on February 3rd, 2014, more than 10 months ago. Not one single neighbor or member of the public attended any of those hearings. The project sponsor, which in this case is the Department of Public Works, actively concealed those hearings from the public. Concealed the hearing dates, concealed the times and the locations, while at the same time falsely informing the Arts Commission that the public had been notified. And the reason I'm bringing this to the attention of the board is because it illustrates just how badly and grossly negligent DPW has handled this project from the very beginning. They've ignored the neighbors. They refused to work with the concerned members of the public. And they sought to have the permits issued for this site without complying with the most fundamental and basic environmental review requirements. The initial environmental application failed to note the presence of leaking underground storage tanks, even though the project description includes the removal and the replacement of those tanks, or USTs. DPW also failed to enroll the project in the Maher program with the Department of Public Health. Again, a basic mandatory requirement for any project that has USTs or is located on Bay Phil, and this project happens to have both. So here we are with DPW and the Fire Department, the city departments that share responsibility for issuing permits for the removal of underground storage tanks, and they failed to follow the procedures for this joint project. If you look at the hazardous materials survey, in addition to the underground storage tanks at the site, there is also asbestos-containing material throughout the building, and lead is also found... is also found at the building, in samples throughout the building, in concentrations far in excess of the federal standards. So the subject site is a hazardous waste site currently on the Cortez List, which is a statewide list of sites compiled under Section 65962.5 of the California Government Code. The express language of the statute forbids the use of a categorical exemption for any project located on a site which is included on this list. We quoted that statutory language in our appeal. And by the way, our appeal was filed more than 10 months ago, in July 2014. And because of the mistakes and errors that were made throughout the process, it's taken this long to even get a hearing scheduled. The same express language forbidding the use of a categorical exemption for projects located on sites found on the Cortez List is found on the Planning Department's website, on the page explaining the application and the use of the categorical exemptions. I attached that as Exhibit 1 to our supplemental brief. I also have additional hard copies for anyone that wants to take a look at that. The same express statutory language is included in SEQA handbooks and policies of our major institutions, such as UCSF. Then I attached that as Exhibit 3. If anyone, again, wants a copy... We have some extra copies, which have these exhibits attached. I was able to deliver a few of them to the offices, but... So the UCSF handbook on SEQA, their environmental handbook is, the part using the same statutory language, is attached as Exhibit 3. This same statutory language has been affirmed time and time again. In fact, many jurisdictions throughout California have amended their project application process so as to screen for project sites located on the Cortez List, so that those project sites may be excluded initially from any consideration of a categorical exemption. And we attached many such applications on our supplemental brief as Exhibit 4. This includes San Diego, Santa Barbara, Atascadero, Napa, Tehachapi, Oxnard, Humboldt County, Kern County, and countless other jurisdictions. All affirm that a categorical exemption may not be issued for such a site. Additionally, courts and other decision-making bodies have also confirmed that the statutory language means just what it says. We attached as Exhibit 5 to the supplemental brief, a 2009 order from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which was granted a petition from the citizens, from a citizens' group, and reversed the San Francisco Bay Board's decision to adopt a cleanup and abatement order, a CAO, for a site in Richmond, California. The local board, when it had adopted the CAO, it found that the adoption of the CAO was categorically exempt under SEQA. Again, this is Exhibit 5 to the supplemental brief. Let me read you what the Water, State Water Resources Control Board said. "Because the site is currently found on the Cortez List, the use of categorical exemption is not proper and violates SEQA." The board went on to say that "the site's placement on a Cortez List precludes the use of a categorical exemption." I used that word "precludes" in our appeal, and the department's response took exception to that. And the department stated that "it doesn't necessarily preclude the grant of a categorical exemption," and offers no explanation, no authority, no statute, and no case law, except that the department says, "Well, if we have a closure letter, then we can use a categorical exemption." That's incorrect as well, as a matter of law. Let me refer you to a case that's only 14 months old, from the First District Court of Appeal. We've attached that as Exhibit 2. This is a near identical situation and a near identical case. The Parker Shattuck Neighbors case was decided in November of 2013. A near identical situation of development that involved underground storage tanks. They had a closure letter from the Berkeley Department of Health. They had a closure letter from the State Water Resources Control Board, the exact same closure letters that the department is referring to. The department affirms clearly, without any doubt, that you may not use a categorical exemption for a Cortez site. On Page 6 of the decision, it states, "We agree that the legislature intended that projects on these sites should not be categorically exempt from SEQA because they may be more likely to involve significant effects on the environment." The first go-round in the Berkeley case, they had given it a categorical exemption. When it came back, the city realized its error and took away the categorical exemption. In this case, the city has not realized its error. There's an overwhelming mountain of statutory authority, case law, administrative body decisions, all which state clearly and affirm the plain language of the statute, which says that you may not issue a categorical exemption for a site that appears on the Cortez List. And that's just what the department has done here. We urge you to grant the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, at this time, we will open it up to those who wish to speak for public comment, for those who support the appeal. So if you can, please line up to my left if you are in support of the appeal. First speaker, you have 2 minutes.
I was hoping that I was on your left. Members of the Board of Supervisor, Presidents, thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Evan Cleter. I grew up in San Francisco, I went to high school here. I have lots of friends who are firemen. I voted for the bond that's allowing the reconstruction of this firehouse to happen. I'm friends with the firemen. We bring them cake with my kids on September 11th. And so, I work in the city, I pay taxes in the city. The way I went down this rabbit hole was I was informed one day a few years ago that they'd be rebuilding the firehouse, could they access my backyard. Of course, I was accommodating and let the Department of Public Works in my backyard and look around and measure. I was told that they'd allow for some participation and comment on the design. I hired a lawyer. He asked when that opportunity was going to be. The next time I was at a meeting with the Department of Public Works, I was shown a design with some objectionable problems. One was an elevator next to my bedroom, the second was a garbage corridor next to my front door, and the last was a wall covering up a window in my children's playroom. I've, anyway, I'm running out of time here. I've run, found dealing with the Department of Public Works, they've not been a friend, they've not been collaborative. They have accommodated me, as has Supervisor Farrell, but I've not seen any change. And as the lawyer has pointed out, there are some health and safety issues that I'm gravely concerned about, and I hope that you'll help protect the neighbors. We've been unincluded in this process whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Patricia Voight, Marina Calhalla, Neighbors and Merchants. This case has annoyed me for a long time. The public was not informed. They called meetings at the last minute, told people to go to the Arts Commission at the last minute. In fact, there were two Art Commission meetings, I think, before we ever saw this. We asked for modifications at the first meeting, they haven't given us modifications. The firemen themselves at the top, they're going to have two very dark rooms to sleep in after they've been in a fire? I really think that this needs to go back to the drawing board. I do not think it passes SEQA. Steve just did a brilliant job on this. And I have a feeling that this is going to go to court. If you guys really want to say something, send it back in saying, "Let's go back to the drawing board." And that's what really needs to be done. It does not pass SEQA. And I just hate seeing everybody ended up going to court in the city. And I think that we can work it out. But I don't understand why they were even doing Station 16 when Station 48 has multimillion dollars worth of problems and safety problems for the citizens, as well as for the Fire Department. To be, have to go to your bathroom and count the rats, it's not fun. I really think that this is a misappropriation of money. I think that SEQA, anybody who says, "Oh, I can't understand SEQA, it's not my realm," it is. It's your duties to go to as many people as you can in a case that's this convoluted and find out what really is the truth. Please vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak in support of the appeal at this time? Seeing none, public comment is... Are you going to speak, sir? Okay. You have 2 minutes.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. My name is Michael Polla, and I'm also a neighbor. I've been in the Marina now for about 20 years, and I just find the whole process that this has gone through to be very secretive. And I've been made aware of a lot of the events that have transpired over the last year and a half just recently. And so I think the lack of discussion, the lack of inclusion of neighbors, has been very upsetting. And I think that having a young family, and having been a loyal resident in the city for so long, I think we deserve a better stake, and that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to provide public comment at this time in support of the appeal? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Now we will turn to the Planning Department for a presentation of no more than 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, President Breed, members of the board. I am Jessica Range, a senior environmental planner with the Planning Department. With me today is Sarah Jones, environmental review officer. The item before you is an appeal of a categorical exemption for the proposed project at 2251 Greenwich Street, also known as Fire Station 16. We sent you a memo dated May 11th responding in detail to the issues raised in the original appeal letter dated July 2nd, 2014. The department subsequently received two letters, one dated May 12th and one dated May 15th, after the board's deadline to submit additional material. The department has reviewed these letters in detail and determined that they do not raise any new issues, and that all of the issues raised in these letters are fully addressed in the department's May 11th appeal response memo. The decision before the board is whether to uphold the department's determination that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, or to overturn the department's decision and return the project to the department for environmental review. The project site is located at 2251 Greenwich, between Fillmore and Steiner in the Marina District. The project consists of demolition and reconstruction of the approximately 9,000-square-foot fire station, and removal of two underground storage tanks. The new fire station would be constructed on the same site, provide the same service capacity, and meet current life safety standards. The project also includes the installation of a new underground storage tank, and replacement of an older diesel generator with a new EPA-compliant Tier IV generator. The SEQA guidelines provide a list of classes of projects that have been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment, and are therefore exempt from SEQA review. Specifically, the Class II exemption includes the replacement or reconstruction of an existing structure or facility where the new structure will be located on the same site and have substantially the same purpose and capacity as the structure replaced. The determination of whether a project is eligible for a categorical exemption is based on the following two-step analysis. The first is to determine whether the project meets the requirements of the exemption. The new fire station would have the same purpose and substantially the same capacity as the existing fire station, and therefore fits squarely within the Class II categorical exemption criteria. The second step is to determine whether any of the exceptions to the categorical exemption apply. One exception is for a project on a hazardous waste site. A categorical exemption cannot be issued for a project included on any list prepared pursuant to Government Code 65962.5, or also known as the Cortez List. The project was placed on the Cortez List in 1987. However, following remediation activities, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, through the authority delegated to them by the State Water Resources Board, determined that the site no longer presented a hazard, and issued what is called a case closure letter, effectively annuling the site's listing on the Cortez List. The second exception is determining whether there are any unusual circumstances with the project or at the project site that present a reasonable possibility of a significant effect. Significant effects are determined, significant effects on the environment must be supported by substantial evidence, and the department has determined that there are no unusual circumstances at the site that could result in a significant environmental effect, and the project is appropriately exempt from environmental review. The remainder of this presentation will address the appellant's main concerns raised in his July 2nd appeal letter. The appellant's primary concern is that the project cannot be issued a categorical exemption because SEQA expressly prohibits an exemption for projects on the Cortez List. You have heard today, and also read in the appellant's May 15th appeal letter, a case involving the Fourth District Court of Appeals decision in Parker Shattuck Neighbors versus Berkeley City Council. However, this case is not directly applicable because it involves the issuance of a negative declaration and not a categorical exemption. There is no existing case law directly on this point. However, the city attorney is here to address the finer points of case law that support the department's determination. The project before you is the demolition and reconstruction of Fire Station 16. The project site has a history of underground storage tanks. In 1987, a UST was discovered, and the site was placed on the Cortez List. The storage tank was removed, and the site remediated, and a closure letter for this site was issued, and it was determined that no further action was required. The Planning Department considers this action to effectively annul the state's original placement on the Cortez List. Once a site is placed on the list, it is never removed. Therefore, this closure letter is the best possible representation of the state's recognition that the problem has been resolved. Regarding the second concern of unusual circumstances and the possibility of significant effect on the environment, the appellant has not provided any substantial evidence to support the claim that there are unusual circumstances at the site. Absent the presence of unusual circumstances, a Class II exemption is appropriate. Thanks. Excuse me. The appellant states that the site's location, size, and type of construction are unusual without providing any evidence. So there's nothing unusual about the site's location, which is on a site with an existing fire station in a primarily residential neighborhood. There are 44 fire stations located throughout the city, many of which approximate to residential uses. The size of the fire station is also not unusual, as the project will be about the same height as the existing fire station and have the same capacity as the existing fire station. No, I'm fine. And then finally, in regards to construction, the estimated construction schedule is 14 months, and there does not appear to be anything unusual about the type of construction proposed. Therefore, we, the department believes there are no unusual circumstances present at the site or with the project. We have, however, evaluated the appellant's claim that the project could have significant effects on the environment in the areas of air quality, hazardous materials, noise, land use, neighborhood character, and social environment. So regarding hazardous materials, we previously explained the history regarding a 1987 underground storage tank. And then subsequently, in 1998, a fire, the fire station installed a 3,000- And then subsequently, in 1998, the fire station installed a 3,000-gallon underground storage tank and discovered a 600-gallon UST when it was going through the installation process. Soil samples were collected, and it was determined that hydrocarbon levels did not exceed allowable state levels, and DPH approved the closure in place of that 600-gallon underground storage tank. So therefore, currently, the project site poses no environmental or human health hazards. The project would remove the existing 600-gallon storage tank and the 3,000-gallon storage tank and replace it with a new tank meeting current standards. This process is heavily regulated by Health Code Article 21, which defines DPH as the responsible entity for implementing California Health and Safety Code Chapter 6.7 regarding the construction, repair, removal, and installation of underground storage tanks. The Fire Department will be responsible for collecting soil samples, having them analyzed, and DPH will be reviewing these reports and will be overseeing the collection of these soil samples. Therefore, with oversight by DPH, UST removal and installation at the site would not result in significant environmental hazards. Similarly, hazardous building materials are also regulated by existing federal and state laws. In regards to land, noise, and neighborhood character, the baseline conditions are the existing conditions at the site. So there's an existing fire station there already, and the site would continue to operate as a fire station upon reconstruction. During construction, construction noise would be regulated by Article 29 of the Police Code. And then lastly, in regards to the social environment, social effects are not significant environmental effects under CEQA. And then in regards... In summary, the Department believes that the project fits within the Class II exemption and that the site's inclusion on the Cortese List, when hazardous materials have been remediated to the satisfaction of the state agency that placed the site on the list, does not preclude the issuance of a categorical exemption. Second, the appellant has not provided any evidence that there are any unusual circumstances that would result in a significant effect on the environment. For these reasons, the Department recommends the Board uphold the CEQA exemption and deny the appeal.
Thank you. Okay, colleagues, are there any questions of the Planning Department at this time? Any comments?
Just had a question through the chair. Can you... It seems like several people said there was not adequate outreach. I mean, can you sort of describe the type of outreach you made for the residents around there?
Actually, I believe the project sponsor will be speaking to the type of outreach. But under CEQA, there is no... Under the exemption, there is no requirement for public outreach, so it's not a CEQA topic.
So maybe someone from DPW or the Fire Department can speak to the outreach efforts done in order to answer Supervisor Yi's question.
Good afternoon, President Reed, members of the Board. Charles Agaris with Department of Public Works, Project Management. If you'll allow me a moment here to queue up the presentation.
Can you speak to the question specifically that Mr. Supervisor Yi asked regarding outreach?
I can. Generally, I have more specific information in our presentation.
Okay, because we're not prepared for your presentation right now.
So very generally, we've had approximately 19 events or sessions that constituted outreach to the public at large, either within the specific circumstances of Civic Design Review or Neighborhood Association-focused meetings or meetings with the immediate neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Ma, you had a question?
Maybe it's to Ms. Byrne and the City Attorney's Office. So I think there's a difference in the interpretation of law. So Mr. Williams and the appellant's are relying on Ken Berry and California Citizens for Environmental Justice, the 2008 case. And then he's also citing, I think you said, a Fourth Circuit case, but the Planning Department staffs distinguish that case because it's a neg-deck and not a categorical exemption. And I'm just wondering why you think, in some ways, the law that Mr. Williams is citing is distinguishable from the facts of this firehouse?
Well, I'm here to advise the Board on the legal standard of review. I haven't looked at the Ken Berry... It's not a court case. It's a Regional Water Quality Control Board decision that is not binding precedent for this body. It's not legal precedent. It wasn't provided me until I walked into this hearing, so I haven't had a chance to review it. So I don't feel that I can comment on that, but I can talk to you about the case law on this issue. And the short version is there is no direct case law on point on this issue. There are a couple cases that sort of touch around this issue around the edges, but neither one is directly on point. One is the Parker decision that, I believe it's Parker Shattuck Neighborhoods v. Berkeley City Council. But that case is not on point because it involved a mitigated negative declaration. And the appellant's in that case were arguing that an EIR should have been done. And so they were arguing, in part, that the fact that the property had been included on the Cortese List should be considered substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that an EIR should have been done. So that really was their argument. The court in that case found in favor of the city of Berkeley and determined that a neg-deck was appropriate and that simple inclusion on the Cortese List was not substantial evidence in support of doing an EIR. Another case which we unfortunately... It's also not directly on point, but it's a little bit more relevant, is currently on appeal to the California Supreme Court, so we cannot rely on it at this time. But it's Citizens for Environmental Responsibility versus the state. And that case, I believe it's a 2014 decision. Yes. And it involved a CADDX for a rodeo at a county fairgrounds. And the state district, I think it was the Agricultural District, issued a CADDX for it, even though the site had been on... Was included on the Cortese List. The Cortese List, however, had... It was a closed case that had been cleaned up. And the court, in its appellate decision, determined that the CADDX had been properly issued, that there were no... It really looked at the unusual circumstances question, though, and it found that there were no unusual circumstances here to indicate that a CADDX would be inappropriate. So it upheld the state's issuance of a CADDX in that case. I do want to emphasize, though, that case is on appeal to the California Supreme Court because of the Berkeley Hillside decision, a different issue involving the unusual circumstances question. So we can't really rely on it. There is nothing directly on point. I think this Board is really charged with determining, is this a reasonable interpretation of what it means to be on the Cortese List if a site has been cleaned up and remediated as has been indicated by the facts here?
Thank you.
Okay. And so with that, colleagues, we are at 3:30, and we have 3:30 accommodations today. And so because we especially are honoring our small business community, we know that we want to do this as efficiently and as quickly as possible because we want to make sure that we respect their time. And so we are going to leave our 3:00 p.m. special order and start with recognition of our honorees here today. As many of you know, today, we are celebrating Small Business Week with over 80,000 small businesses in San Francisco. We are joined by our outstanding businesses from each of the districts. Before we get started, everyone, under Board Rule 4.13, which limits each commendation to five minutes each, that will include your comments as supervisor, your honorees' comments, as well as the time to take photographs. And this will hopefully allow us a chance to get through this, the 11 honorees today as quickly and as efficiently as possible. I'd like to start the commendations by welcoming the President of the Small Business Commission, Mr. Mark Dwight, to make some brief opening remarks.
Hello there. Thank you, President Reed. Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Mark Dwight, President of the Small Business Commission and a local business owner and local manufacturer myself with Rickshaw Bagworks out in the historic Dogpatch neighborhood in District 10. Thank you, Supervisor Cohen. It's my honor and pleasure today to join you to celebrate San Francisco Small Business Week and recognize 11 special small businesses, one from each of your districts, with our Small Business Honoree Program. Last night, we officially kicked off our 11th Annual San Francisco Small Business Week with our Flavors of San Francisco event at the Metreon, where 1,500 attendees enjoyed food and sweets and beverages from a multitude of local restaurants and makers. This year's theme is "Celebrate Small Business." We have much to celebrate. Small business deserves to be celebrated. It's the small businesses that help shape our communities and our neighborhoods and create the vibrant communities that we all love and that tourists love about us. We all know that small business ownership is difficult, but it's also supremely rewarding. San Francisco has nearly 80,000 small businesses. It's an amazing number. With 100 employees or less, they range from dog walkers and childcare providers, janitors, marketing consultants, mobile food operators, restaurateurs, retailers, manufacturers, massage practitioners, lawyers, marketing consultants, architects, designers, florists, all kinds of different professions. The list goes on. Small businesses are the economic backbone of our neighborhood corridors, providing for the needs of residents and visitors. Generally, small businesses thrive when the city thrives and also struggle when the city struggles. Today, however, we face something of a paradox of extreme prosperity. And all of us, small business owners and residents alike, face some affordability issues. Affordability impacts competition for commercial space, rising rents, shrinking profit margins. And these are the realities for today's small business owners, especially here in San Francisco, but also throughout the Bay Area and throughout the country. The Small Business Commission and the Office of Small Business are thankful for the many close partnerships they've developed with members of the Board of Supervisors and the Mayor's Office that will allow us to work towards mitigating many of today's most pressing small business challenges and to prevent the institution of obstacles to business formation and growth. In the past year, with your support, we have launched an award-winning business portal at the Office of Small Business and has served already over 3,000 business clients. We've worked with the Planning Department to establish a Community Business Priority Process Program, CB3P, to help expedite the conditional use process in certain instances. And we've developed a rapid-response system for businesses that face disaster, including accessing SBA disaster relief loans. Supervisor Farrell, with your leadership, the Office of Small Business, and as Akiva Zip trustee, to date, the Office of Small Business has sponsored seven loans totaling $33,000 to local small businesses. Thank you for that. There are many more accomplishments, but today you will recognize 11 of San Francisco's most special businesses as selected by each of you, your supervisors. This provides a rare opportunity for us to highlight these businesses and to get these business owners away from their day-to-day activities and to come to these hallowed halls here at City Hall. And many of us never make the trip over here, so it's fantastic to be here. Thank you very much for providing this forum to recognize the most deserving individuals and businesses in our community, and I look forward to working with you to foster, promote, and retain San Francisco's small businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And so at this time, first up, we will call Supervisor Julie Christensen.
Great. I'd like to call up Jay Espenenko and Melissa Guni. And is Henry with you? You can bring Henry, too. We're going to salute a small business family. We might as well have the future generation with us.
Thank you.
So I want to thank Melissa and Jay for making the effort to get down here. It was no small thing. They're running two businesses in District 3 and raising a family. I think they're kind of the epitome of young, small-business owners. So there's a lot to love about Jay and Melissa and their businesses. They own Little Vine on Grant Avenue in North Beach, and they also own the Union Larder in Russian Hill. And I think there are a number of things about those businesses that bear our attention. One, both are pioneering locations. They selected spots where people said, hmm, is anybody going to walk that far for a sandwich? And they've created a sense of community around both those locations. They opened Little Vine in hard times economically, when money was tight and the recession was making the starting of businesses difficult. One of the first encounters that some of the members of the public had with them, I was contacted by a newspaper columnist who was bemoaning the loss of a number of heritage businesses in North Beach. Fiorda Talia had been forced to close, Caesar's had closed, and the columnist called up with violins in the background, sad about those changes. And I said to him, yes, we're sad, but have you been to Little Vine? Have you been to Don Pisto's? Have you been to Carmel Blue? And it landed up, we got an article about the great and thriving new businesses in North Beach, which made us really happy. I was pleased, like a lot of businesses, they had some difficulty with their permits and their licenses, but it's always been fun to see the people who most vehemently oppose their liquor license coming on down for the Thursday evening wine tastings. So I think everybody's kind of come around. So there's a lot to love. They sell local goods. I think Jay makes the best sandwich in North Beach. Don't tell the old timers. And I'm sure this is a future heritage business. So I want to congratulate Jay and Melissa on a great job and say how pleased we are to have them as a small business in District 3.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say anything?
I just want to... Mainly, I just want to thank you for including us in this. It was a real surprise and an honor, so we really appreciate you, you know, choosing us for this. And also, obviously, the residents of North Beach and Russian Hill. Today's... We opened our doors, and they've been coming since day one and really going out of their way to support it. So it really makes us honored and extra happy, for sure. And we got something to pass along to him one day, which is pretty special. Well, thank you.
You're going to take it. All right.
All right. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, and one, two, three, little guy out, but all right. And one more.
Okay, congratulations. And up next is Supervisor Farrell.
Thank you, President Reed. So colleagues, I get the chance to honor a small business today in District 2 that I've actually been going to my entire life, and so it's really fun to bring them up. So Gil Hodges... Where's Gil? Gil, come on up. And the owners of Liverpool Lills, which is a restaurant in Calhalla, unfortunately made some recent headlines over the past few weeks. It suffered a fire in the building, and they're working to repair it and reopen it. But I just want to welcome them here today. To give a bit of background, Liverpool Lills was started in 1973 by Ralph Maher and has been serving San Francisco residents for over 42 years. Prior to opening Lills, Ralph would travel to Liverpool to visit friends and soak up the pub life. In his travels, he met a barmaid in one of his favorite pubs over in Liverpool, and they developed a relationship, and he brought her over to the United States here in San Francisco and built Lills for her, a true labor of love. And Eddie and Marcelo Savino and Gil and Jennifer Hodges bought Liverpool Lills in 2006 and have maintained exactly what it is today. Baseball fans will note that Gil Hodges is a relative of the former Gilbert Ray Hodges, who played mostly for the Brooklyn and Los Angeles Dodgers and was inducted into the Mets Hall of Fame in '82. We'll forgive him for that one, us all being Giants fans here. Liverpool Lills is on Lion Street, very close to Lombard Gate of the Presidio. It's one of our top, for sure, neighborhood restaurants. Everyone loves it. People go to Lills to do everything from the amazing food and the French onion soup that everyone continues to talk about, to just hang out in the pub. They've had colorful bartenders over the years. My dad used to frequent... People go to Lills to do everything from the amazing food and the French onion soup that everyone continues to talk about, to just hang out in the pub. They've had colorful bartenders over the years. My dad used to frequent it as a bar patron for years growing up. But the one thing that I do remember is simply growing up there, going with my two parents as an only kid, and just the atmosphere is still the same exactly today as it was decades ago when I grew up. And it's one of those institutions, not only in our city, but certainly inside of District 2 and Cow Hollow and Marina. I wish you all the best as you recover from the fire damage. I know that, what a drag that is to go through, but it's really a pleasure for me to honor you guys and bring you up here today. Again, just as someone who's been going to your restaurant my entire life, I've brought my kids there, and we just love it there. So congratulations, thanks for all that you do, and look forward to the grand opening really soon. So congratulations.
Just quickly, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for having us. Mark, thank you so much for honoring us. It's really a pleasure. Thank you for the honor and also thank you for the patronage, also equally supportive.
Bet.
The community's been unbelievable during the fire. The outreach has been unbelievable, the support that that community has for each other, the outreach, like I said, the willingness to lend a hand, to pick up a shovel, to do anything has been, it's been really overwhelming, so it's an honor for us just to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, very much, and thank everybody for having us today. There's a lot of great places in District 2, and for you to pick us, Liverpool Lills, we're taken back by this, and we thank you very much for all the support and the recognition and the patronage, like Gil was saying, we appreciate you coming by, generation after generation. Thank you very much, everyone.
You're up next.
Thank you, President Breed. Colleagues, at a committee hearing last week, the Planning Director mentioned that San Francisco has a heart, and he identified the central downtown corridor along Market Street as the heart of San Francisco. I understood his comments, but I wanted to, and I said back to him that, in my opinion, the heart of San Francisco is where the people are, but it's also where the small businesses are, the 80,000 that were mentioned earlier by Mr. Dwight. And one of the amazing, heroic small businesses along Clement Street is Parklife, and I wanted to ask Jamie Alexander and Derek Song to come up here. And I'll explain, too, how they've revitalized a whole merchant corridor with a great new merchants' association. They bring fun and excitement and creativity to our neighborhood. I see them during the farmer's market Sunday mornings, but also in the evenings as I drop by. I love the type of items they have in their store, but let me kind of explain what Parklife is. They're an independent retail store and art gallery. They're located in the inner Richmond district, but now they're also in the Mission. It was started about 10 years ago in 2006 by Jamie Alexander and Derek Song. And Parklife is not just a store, a gallery, but it really brings a lot of life and color and creativity to our whole district and city. Until their recent expansion with their gallery in the Mission District, Parklife Gallery has hosted almost 100 exhibits along Clement Street showcasing some of the most exciting contemporary artists in the world. One of my favorites, and I use it for one of my profile pictures, I have my hands spread in front of Rachel Budd's over-collected butterfly, amazing mural. There's also other stuff. I love the David Shrigley "Politicians Make Me Sick" and other great art, and skate decks as well. But there's so much to say about the amazing local artists that are brought into Parklife. Jamie and Derek's leadership is really important in revitalizing businesses along the inner Clement corridor and throughout the Richmond district. They were instrumental in bringing the parklet in front of, very close to their store, but in front of Kumiko Coffee House on Third and Clement, a few doors down from them. They also were really central in bringing the farmer's market to the district. That's been extremely successful for the whole neighborhood, every Sunday from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. I always bump into Jamie with his, with his family there, too. So he's not only kind of the business owner with Derek, but also a part of our community. Parklife features art and design products culled together from all over the world, hard-to-find, limited-edition stuff, unique items. I just love to get buried in the books that you have right in the front, but the t-shirts, many of them are in my closet as well, but lots of great stuff in there. Housewares jewelry, artists multiples, original art, and so much more. I think you're part of the Richmond district's pride in many ways, your store. I also wanted to say that you've worked with dozens of local artists over the past six years, but also artists from outside of San Francisco to produce products ranging from books, zines and prints to t-shirts, skate decks, and various types of cool objects. They're also publishers of books and catalogs under their Paper Museum Press that they both run as well. Jamie Alexander studied design and art history and has been a patron of Bay Area arts for 20 years. I just, I think you guys had a space in the art market recently in Fort Mason, and Jamie's a member of the Headland Center for the Arts and Creative Growth. And Derek's a history buff, the master at trivia. He's also a publisher at Paper Museum Press, and they're just wonderful when I drop in on them at Parklife. So colleagues, I wanted, oh, and Jamie's, and Derek's also the former manager of Giant Robot Magazine, one of my favorites, and stores. That was many years ago, though, I think. Thank you to Jamie and Derek for revitalizing Clement Street, being such a great, great leaders in our small businesses in our city, and I'm really proud to say thank you and congratulations for being the Richmond district's Small Business of the Year. Jamie and Derek from Parklife.
I'd just like to say, Eric, thank you and your staff for your continued support of the businesses in District 1 and in particular Clement Street in helping it get revitalized. It really helped a lot.
Again, yeah, again, with all the businesses in the Richmond district, it's, we're honored to be singled out. Thank you.
Thank you, President Breed. So today, I am pleased to recognize our District 4 Honoree for Small Business Month, Noriega Produce. So if Dimitri and his family can come on up, that would be great. So welcome. Here with us today is Dimitri Vardikastanas, did I pronounce that right? Who is a well-known and well-loved member of the Sunset District community. I just know Dimitri by his first name. He is joined by his father Gus, his brother Bobby, and Mike and Paul, both managers at Noriega Produce. So the Vardikastanas family is a San Francisco institution. After immigrating here in 1974, they opened the infamous Haight-Ashbury Produce in 1981. In 1985, they opened Noriega Produce, which is near 46th Avenue, and this year, they're actually celebrating their 30th anniversary. Dimitri began working at Noriega Produce while he was in high school at the age of 16, and he always enjoyed interacting with patrons and neighbors, and if you stop by the market today, you will see him smiling, talking, and laughing with his customers. As a young adult, he became fascinated with how the grocery business was constantly changing, and he worked with his family to expand the shop with new products and goods and expanded the market from produce to a small-scale, full-service market. In fact, they even sell their own personal wine label, Varda Vineyards, at their shops. Dimitri partnered with another small business on Outer Noriega to design their wine label's logo, and we really love how our businesses are working and creating together. Dimitri and other merchants have also worked tirelessly to transform the Outer Noriega Street corridor into the vibrant area it is today. They have together removed concrete and landscaped the sidewalks. They have hosted sidewalk sales during Small Business Week. They have also developed the Ocean Beach Music and Art Festival, which is formerly known as the Noriega Street Fair. And this festival occurs in October and is attended by hundreds of residents and families. Last year, Dimitri and I shared a booth. We, well, Noriega Produce donated pumpkins, and we helped children at the festival paint them so they could take them home. Everyone who shops at Noriega Produce knows that it's a very well-stocked store with high-quality items. The family has been looking for options to expand their market in Sunset for many years, and we are excited to announce that they are planning to create a full-service market with a butcher shop, deli, café, and juice bar, along with a great produce department on Noriega Street in the future. So later this year, the family will also be opening Gus's Market in the Mission District. The market is named after Gus, Dimitri's father, who was the man behind iconic neighborhood markets and who you can still see in the aisles of Haight-Ashbury Produce today. The environment that Dimitri's family has created at their shops is really unlike any other. As they say, they always have thought of themselves as more than just where you grab your eggs, where an extension of your kitchen, your pantry, and your home. And apparently, you can pick up more than just groceries at Noriega Produce. Dimitri and his family boast that more than a few people have met their future spouses in their aisles. So we thank Dimitri and his family for their commitment, and of course, all of your staff for your contributions to our community and your dedication to creating such a friendly and quality grocery store in the outer Sunset. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Tang and staff and supervisors. It really goes out to our neighborhood that's supported us for so long and has helped us grow and makes coming to work and establishing and growing a business so easy. So without our amazing staff, our family, who's helped through the years, who wouldn't even give us the opportunity to be here today freely, so thank you and thank you for your time.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Supervisor Scott Weiner.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today, I am thrilled to be able to honor and recognize a true institution in District 8 and in the city, the Roxy Theater, as the District 8 Small Business of the Year. The Roxy first opened in 1909 as the C.H. Brown Theater, changing its name to the Roxy Theater in 1933. It's the oldest continuously operated cinema in the United States and the second-oldest continuously operated cinema in the world. Throughout its history, the Roxy has showcased a dynamic array of cinema from second runs of Hollywood films in the 1940s and 1950s to German and Russian-language films in the 1960s and 1970s. The theater later gained fame for premiering such films as The Life and Death of Frida Kahlo, David Lynch's Eraserhead, and John Cocteau's The Phantom Baron, making the Roxy an integral part of the Bay Area cinematic community. More recently, the Little Roxy opened next door on 16th Street in 2003, and the Roxy Theater became a nonprofit 501(c)(3) in 2009. Today, the Roxy facilitates a space for people of all ages and backgrounds to gather, connect, and learn about the world and one another in an accessible environment through daily film screenings, festivals, series, special events, presentations, and educational programs. I will also say, just as, not just a person who has the honor of representing District 8, but as a neighbor who lives pretty close to the theater, as someone who has seen many movies at the Roxy Theater and gotten to know the Roxy community, how proud I am that the Roxy Theater continues to exist. We know that in San Francisco today, a lot of people are struggling to stay here, a lot of businesses are struggling to stay here, and I'll tell you, the fact that a nonprofit movie theater is able to continue to thrive in the heart of the Mission speaks volumes about the strength of this community. We can't take institutions like the Roxy for granted. Our arts community is under enormous pressure, and the Roxy is certainly no exception. And I just want to say to you and to everyone who makes the Roxy succeed, thank you for sticking in there, for working so hard and for fighting. You will always have my support, and I think I can speak for everyone that you will always have our support. So congratulations, and I'm really thrilled to be able to recognize the Roxy today.
Thank you, Supervisor Weiner. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Thank you to the Commission for Small Business and also the Office of Small Business. We are thrilled to be here. There are so many deserving small businesses in District 8 and throughout the city, and we like to think that we're here because of our tenacity and our 106 years. Diane?
Thank, sorry, my dog and I. Thank you very much for your generosity today and your consideration, and Scott, we think you are the most wonderful supervisor in my district and have for a long time. Please love the Roxy. We love the Roxy. You know, we're going through the same things that many people are in terms of rent raises and so on, but we're there for you, and we're a meeting place, an entertainment place, and something where the experience, we hope, we can make more and more, better and better for you over the coming years. So thank you so much, everybody.
So nice.
Wow. That goes to share with both of us. Everybody, everybody.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
One, two, three, four.
Supervisor Yi.
Okay, it's my turn from District 7. Colleagues, today, I am pleased to honor Matt Rogers, the owner and operator of Papenhausen Hardware on West Porto Avenue. This store has operated for 79 years and is a staple on West Porto Avenue. Henry Papenhausen, a local builder, opened the Papenhausen Hardware in 1936 on West Porto Avenue in the same location it sits at today. In those 79 years, the business has switched hands only twice, most recently in 1988, when it was purchased by Matt. Matt worked at Papenhausen Hardware part-time while attending San Francisco State University, where he was pursuing a business degree with a concentration in small business management. The store helped serve as a perfect example for various class projects and papers, including a full-scale business plan that eventually won Matt a competition sponsored by the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce. When the owner of Papenhausen Hardware announced his plans to sell his store and retire, Matt was in a unique position to take over. After obtaining some seed financing from his relatives and a few weeks after his 23rd birthday, Matt became the latest owner of the Papenhausen Hardware, even before receiving his bachelor's degree. In the past 27 years, the store has survived some tough times, expanded to multiple locations, downsized, and even survived a fire that closed the business for nine months. It has survived because Matt has provided genuine service and also has adjusted because Matt has provided genuine service and also has adjusted to the changing needs of the community. The store today is a fixture on West Porto and one of the only handful of businesses that have been there longer than 50 years. Despite a trend where independent brick-and-mortar stores are vanishing, Pappenhausen is a strong, successful, and thriving business. I would like to welcome Matt to the podium, along with his store manager, Carl Aguilar, to accept the award.
Thank you Supervisor Yi and the whole board. It is, it is nice to be recognized. Thank you very much. And I just want to say again, my manager, Carl Aguilar, is really responsible for our success in these last 20 years, and I want to personally thank him.
Thanks a lot. It's, it's nice to be recognized. So many deserving businesses. It's hard to imagine that anyone would think of our little store, but it's a privilege just to be able to, to run a business in the city and to be able to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We'd like to call up Bayardo Talavera. So, I am honoring today Ana's Market, which is in the OMI neighborhood. That stands for Ocean View, Merced Heights, and Ingleside neighborhood, the southwest part of District 11. Ana's Market is owned by Thelma Orozco and Bayardo Talavera. Bayardo's here right now. Both are from Nicaragua. They've operated Ana's Store for the past 14 years. What's really great about Ana's Market, though, is that Ana's Market has been part of a real concerted effort with the city to help transform this part of the neighborhood, bringing in pedestrian safety amenities, better transit, and also bringing a lot of the expertise from the Mayor's Office of Economic and Workforce Development through the Invested Neighborhoods Program. Last year, in December, Ana's had a ribbon-cutting relaunching after the market had a makeover under the Invested Neighborhoods Healthy Retail SF Program. You all might remember the Healthy Retail SF Program was a pilot program that was created by Supervisor Marr to promote healthy eating and fresh produce in every neighborhood. It helps improve the neighborhood health and helps improve the health of the community by having access to healthy food and fresh produce. And Ana's Market has really taken under a real, direct consideration how they can transform their market to provide the kind of healthy produce that was desperately needed in the OMI neighborhood, where the closest store to get fresh produce is Stone Town, where Trader Joe's is. We've also been working in the neighborhood to create a neighborhood farm, and so this is just one part of many of the components that we have in place to help make sure that the neighborhood has access to healthy food. Small, independent markets like Ana's also need to have a very critical role, play a really critical role in not just community health, but making sure that we can actually have other means of economic viability for the neighborhood. And the Invested Neighborhoods Program has been very, very helpful. It helped to bring new technology to Ana's Market and also to the neighborhood as well. I believe Ana's Market also has coffee that they do now provide as well. And over the past year, their profits and sales have increased by 24%, showing that there's a real turnaround happening there at the market and in the neighborhood. So, I'm honored to be supporting Ana's Market and honored to be giving this award to Bayardo today on behalf of Ana's Market. His wife couldn't be here to, Thelma couldn't be here to accept, but I just wanted to thank you for your work in the neighborhood and your commitment to providing good produce and your commitment to actually making change in your own way of doing business to support the neighborhood and your own economic viability. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Business, I thank you. Okay, I thank the city, Supervisor Avalos. I want to thank everything you guys have done for me. We do our best. My wife couldn't be here. She's in Nicaragua taking care of her mom who's ill, but from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all for being, for helping us succeed.
Thank you.
And I thank you all for making changes in your business to help the community. It's very important, very big. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. It is now my turn to present. Will the King and Queen of the South of District Five please come forward? Ladies and gentlemen, we have with us today Chuck and his wife Amanda from Costumes on Hate. So, as you know, in San Francisco, having fun is something that we as San Franciscans take very seriously. Since 1997, Costumes on Hate has been a business that helps us do just that. Founders Danny Tagg and his late partner Frank Nicarato first opened the store as a vintage clothing store, but it soon evolved into a one-stop-shop for artists, performers, and industry professionals, as well as people looking to dress in costume for many occasions. Costumes on Hate has supplied costumes for many citywide events, including the recent Beta Breakers, Santa Con, of course Halloween, and New Year's, as well as Burning Man. They also have great drag wear, and if you have the desire to dress as a gorilla or a king, it's Costumes on Hate where you want to go to get your costumes. Not only are they the business of fun, they also give back to the community in a variety of ways, especially through their donations to organizations like the AIDS Life Cycle, Bay Area Video Coalition, Asian American Recovery Services, the Make-A-Wish Foundation, as well as some of our local schools. They sponsor the fabulous SF Drag King Contest, and Supervisor Weiner will be participating this year, and participants in the Lower Hates Famous Art Walk as well. Today's Costume on Hate is represented by Chuck and his wife Amanda Niclo, who currently has served for 11 years as the operations manager of the store. It's an amazing store. I've been going there for years. Thank you for always having something that fits the plus size. I do really appreciate that very much. And again, congratulations to Costumes on Hate. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of Danny Tagg and Costumes on Hate, I'd like to thank Supervisor Breed and the whole Board of Supervisors for this incredibly distinguished honor. It means a lot to be recognized as a small business and know that the, the city and the Board understands the importance of unique and vibrant small businesses in this city. I've always considered being such a part of the fun, activities, and the creative side of San Francisco as its own reward, but this is truly an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Campos.
Thank you, Madam President. It's really amazing to see the incredible businesses that are being honored today, and it is my pleasure to continue the incredible, with the incredible group of people by calling on Alba Guerra and Wilson Alvarez from Sunrise Restaurant. Si puede venir Alba y Luis Alvarez? And I, it is my real pleasure to, to recognize not only a restaurant that provides incredible food, but really provides a tremendous service to the community. This is a restaurant that was open on May 28, 2005, so it'll be 10 years next week. Alba is from El Salvador, and Wilson is from Honduras. They've created a neighborhood restaurant that, that serves dishes from all of Latin America, and if you haven't been to Sunrise on 24th Street, I strongly encourage you to please do. It's incredible food, but it's also a restaurant that, that truly is a local place. It serves the local community and visitors alike. And what is incredible about Sunrise is how committed it is to community. Every Thursday night, Alba and Wilson open Sunrise to nonprofit organizations where they hold events. They also donate 20% of all the proceeds they earn those Thursdays to that nonprofit, and this weekly donation has provided essential help to nonprofits that have been struggling, as, as so many have been, not only in San Francisco, but especially in the Mission. And Alba and Wilson don't just support nonprofits. They also support members of the community that are fighting cancer, that are going through challenging times. When my dear friend Eric Assada was fighting cancer, Alba and Wilson held several fundraisers at Sunrise and donated 100% of those proceeds for the medical expenses that Eric, a hero in our community, had to face. Sunrise is truly a special place. It contributes so much, so much to 24th Street and the entire Mission, but in, ultimately, it's a reflection of, of Alba and Wilson's values. And so, as a supervisor for District Nine, thank you so much to Alba, to Wilson, to Sunrise Cafe. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alba.
Muchas gracias. Gracias Supervisor, muchas gracias a todos, y gracias por todo el soporte también que me dan al restaurante, y gracias a mi familia. Muchas gracias.
So she thanks me, she thanks the Board for the support, and also to her family and the, the workers at the restaurant. Congratulations, Feliz Dia.
time on the clock, so.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the small business community, the commission, the commissioners that are here today. Thank you very much for, oh, hello. Thank you very much for providing the backbone, support, education, training, and resources needed to, to continue to support our small business community. And today, I'm super excited. You're going to love this, President Breed. I'm super excited because today I get to honor a man named Howard Hines and Maria Tan. They are owners of the most fantastic nail spa located in Pachero Hill. Now, I may be biased because I am a frequent, very, very frequent patron of Tiptoes, and I assure you, and many others in the neighborhood are also just as frequent as I am. They have many great things to say about Maria and Howard and the entire Tiptoes team. Tiptoes helps make the, the business community of San Francisco diverse, particularly in Pachero Hill, and, and they serve many people in the neighborhood, and many people also trek all across the city just to spend, spend some time in the nail salon, in the spa. And I think it's a poignant time to uplift the small business when you consider the New York Times' recent investigation into the widespread problems and working conditions of nail salons that has shed some light on the many issues, including the use of toxic chemicals. And so, I'm really proud to say that Tiptoes doesn't use any of these toxic chemicals. In fact, Maria was pregnant when the salon was built, and cautious about Tiptoes being a place where mothers and pregnant women can visit and not worry about hazardous chemicals and odors. Odors. So, today, we come to celebrate and honor Tiptoes for your commitment to the District Ten community. We celebrate you, and we are very grateful to have you here with us. Congratulations.
We just want to say thank you very much for the recognition. Thank you Supervisor Cohen and the Board of Supervisors for having us. Maria and I, we put our heart and soul into our business, and we just feel truly honored to be recognized for District Ten. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and we just really want to thank you for, for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
time, unfortunately Supervisor Kim could not be with us today, but Supervisor Campos will be recognizing her honoree on behalf of Supervisor Kim. Supervisor Campos.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And as, as the President noted, Supervisor Kim could not be here. She's away on business, but it is my honor to recognize an incredible business, to recognize what they do for District Six. The business is Un Cafecito, and so I want to bring up Alejandra Perez Orozco of Un Cafecito. Alejandra came to the United States 20 years ago from Mexico City. She was raised by a single mother in a very poor family. Her father passed away when she was two years old, and her mother worked very hard to support Alejandra and her two sisters and brother. She started working when she was eight, doing dishes and chores for other families in the neighborhood. When Alejandra finished high school, she did not have enough money to continue her studies in college, and so she came to the United States in 1995. At that point, she decided to open her own business after working double shifts at several taquerias. Not long after, both she and her husband lost their jobs, resulting in the loss of their home. But Alejandra turned her misfortune into an opportunity, and with the support of her husband, decided to take courses at City College. Alejandra graduated in 2011 with a culinary degree. While she knew nothing about opening a business... While she knew nothing about opening a business, she decided to turn to the Women's Initiative Spanish Language Program, Alternativas para Latinas en Auto Suficiencia, ALAS, as well as the Mission Economic Development Agency, MEA. Alejandra opened up Un Cafecito in December of 2012. Supervisor Kim worked very hard with MEA to apply for a grant from the Mayor's Office of Workforce and Economic Development to support their vision of opening a café, corner store, that would sell healthy food to surrounding community and the food desert that is the Tenderloin. Un Cafecito serves about 150 people a week, including the large Latino population that has moved into that neighborhood. Un Cafecito's menu includes traditional El Salvadoran pupusas and Mexican tamales, with healthy mixed vegetable juices and other natural products such as natural yuca and plantain chips that are purchased from locally-based entrepreneurs. This establishment is known for their breakfast burritos and their central location across from the Bettecker Park, which is a central area for youth and families, is really central. The café literally acts as a community center where people love to gather and meet and eat. Alejandra opened up Un Cafecito with her friend Karina, and their combined resources were able to keep costs down, though they are now working with Kiva to secure a loan for a convention. Since opening, she has expanded the business and hired two additional employees. Her vision is to expand the healthy food options in the café with a full produce market to open next door. Eventually, she wants to open a larger café that has a kitchen where she can bake pastries and bread, and give more opportunities for employment to residents at the Tenderloin. They really see her as an extended family. So on behalf of Supervisor Jane Kim, I want to recognize this incredible community leader, Alejandra. And Alejandra, I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to say a few words, but congratulations, thank you for what you do for this incredible community. Felicidades.
I want to say thank you to everybody. This recognition means a lot to me. And I want to say a special thanks to my business Karina, my business partner Karina, and to Jim Escobedo, because he is the one who believes in my dream from the beginning until today.
Okay, everyone, thank you so much. That brings us to the end of honoring our small businesses here in the city and county of San Francisco. As you can see, we have some amazing small businesses. A lot of folks who not only run their business, but they hire locally, they give back to the community, and they are the reasons why San Francisco is such a great place to live. And so, I want to thank you all for taking time to come down here and to hear about the different businesses in all of the districts in San Francisco. I'll be tiptoeing over to District 10 to get my nails and my toes done pretty soon. So again, everyone, thank you for being here. Thank you Regina. I see Monetta White, who is a business owner in District 5, 1300 on Fillmore. I mean, usually I get real hungry during Small Business Week when they start talking about restaurants, and next time, all restaurants are required to bring food with them. Other than that, thank you, and we will continue with our agenda and go back to our appeal. Thank you and congratulations. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we return to our regular business and finish with our appeal? I know that we already heard from the Planning Department, and we are now at a point where we can hear from the project sponsor, which will have up to 10 minutes for a presentation.
Good afternoon again, President Breed, members of the board, Charles Garris, Public Works, Project Management, and responsible for the Earthquake Safety and Emergency Response Bond Programs. We have a small presentation to offer you today regarding the project. My colleague Sam Choi has some hard copies of the presentation if you wish to see it in hard copy form. So a few components to this brief presentation. First off, would like to offer you a very quick recital on the Earthquake and Emergency Response Bond Program. As you know, we've passed two bonds under this rubric, June of 2010 and also June of 2014. June of 2010 is providing the funding for an array of neighborhood fire station projects, certainly among them Station 16. It is one of four actual seismic replacement projects, 5, 16, 35, and the station on Treasure Island, which has been partially funded by Easter Funds, number 48, which coincidentally was inaugurated today and will be in operation tomorrow. So we invite you to visit that station if you would like. As I mentioned, Easter 2014 also has brought funding forward. So in addition to the 65.1 made available through Easter 2010, we also have another 85 million being brought forward to address fire station needs. We are addressing 23 stations under the current 2010 program. We intend to address the balance of stations through the 2014 bond program. What I'd like to do at this moment is to introduce Chief Ken Lombardi with the Fire Department to speak to the matter of operational characteristics of this facility, and then it'll come back to me for some closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, President Breed, Board of Supervisors. Thanks for having us here today. Speaking to Station 16, it serves basically the Marina neighborhood bounded by Pacific Avenue, Van Ness, and Lyon Street. If you look at the current map in front of you, you can see that area is full of a lot of liquefaction, which makes it a unique firehouse after a seismic event such as Loma Prieta and the big earthquake down there. Part of the Easter bond is to, when we do a rebuild, it's to make these firehouses essential facilities, and that should make them fully operational up to a 7.5 earthquake, where not only will they be standing, but we would be able to go to work immediately after with full power and operation of our doors, which in an area like this makes it essential for us. As you know, San Francisco is unique, especially when it comes to fighting fires outside of all this liquefaction. We have 44 firehouses in various neighborhoods throughout the city. The reason for having so many firehouses is so we can respond immediately to a fire. We have zero lot lines, and the topography of this city make it a unique ability for rapid spread of fire. And so, that's why we have so many firehouses strategically placed throughout the city. This firehouse in particular houses one engine and one truck with a total of nine members working 24/7, with approximately a little over 30 members of the house, but always on a 24-hour period, there'll be nine members there. Combine those, the engine in that truck last year ran over 3,500 runs out of that location right there. So the Fire Department, we also do jet skis and water rescue out of this area. They keep the jet skis down at the Marina, and then they respond from the firehouse down to the jet skis. We think this is a unique station. We would like to rebuild it, we feel it needs a rebuild just for the area, and we want to make sure this station is standing after a seismic event so we can go to help the neighborhood, which eventually would help rebuild the city in a faster manner. Thank you.
So very briefly, a few characteristics of the project. We are replacing an aged facility, well over 75 years in age, and as you can expect, it is remarkably deficient in a number of regards that we're seeking to address and to bring it into the modern era so that it can best respond to calls for service from the neighborhood. Chief among them certainly is making certain that it is seismically resilient and able to withstand the big one and continue in operation without defect. Separately, we're doing more practical elements or aspects of the day-to-day, and that's increasing the apparatus, which is the vehicle areas, so that newer, modern vehicles, which tend to be larger, can be accommodated and separately, that there's sufficient working clearances for the firefighters to both address the needs of the apparatus as well as deploy onto or from the station. We're also bringing forward new generator and new storage tanks. These are modern design with all of the safety attributes that one would expect to inhibit any potential threat to environment. So it's dramatic improvement over what was installed as little as 15 years ago, and so we expect that that is a great benefit both to the station and to the neighborhood. By statute, we are also bringing ADA access to the facility as a public facility. Federal statute, as well as local sentiment, I'm sure, compels us to do the right thing as regards disabled access. We're adding other elements or aspects of enhancement for the sake of firefighter functionality, and so new workshop, new gear drying room, decontamination showers, as well as updated telecommunications and IT support for the facility. The budget is approximately $10.7 million. So a few images here, hopefully you have the hard copy, it probably reads a little better than this projected image. We are growing the facility by about 10% in total square footage. As I mentioned to you, all for the purpose of bringing it into the modern era with all of the proper array of spaces and sized spaces so that we can support the fire personnel well into the next two generations. This, these drawings here, these rendings, in fact, we show before and after. The smaller image is the current station, the larger image is the proposed and approved design by Civic Design Review. This elevation, elevations on this slide are the front of the building on Greenwich. This next slide are images of the rear of the building on Pixley. As I mentioned pursuant to a question asked, I believe by Supervisor Yi, there have been a number of external meetings, and as I mentioned, 19 by our count, six among commerce and neighborhood groups, which are described on the footnote of this particular slide for groups in particular. We owe a debt of gratitude to Supervisor for facilitating many of these meetings and for encouraging our efforts of outreach to the larger community. We've also have, has been mentioned Civic Design Review meetings, which are sponsored by the San Francisco Arts Commission. And we've had approximately 10 meetings with the neighbors immediately adjacent to the site. Many of these meetings were in the spirit of seeking some reconciliation of respective needs and expectations. We have done what we believe to be the appropriate reconciliation possible for the sake of certainly this project and its purpose as a first responder facility, as I mentioned, for a few generations to come. And so, rather than go through each one of these, I'll leave it to you to inquire on any one of them if you choose. And with that, I conclude my comments and ask for any questions you would wish to offer. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no names on the roster at this time, we will open up the item to public comment for those who would like to speak in opposition of the appeal. You will have up to two minutes. Seeing none, public comment. Okay. And just for clarity, this is anyone who is in clear support of the project. Can you speak into the microphone, Juicy?
Although I'm not in class by any means necessary on the birthday of Malcolm X, I do have a fire story. You know, December 31st, there was a fire in my building, someone set my room on fire. And if you look here, this is what they say marijuana set this placid on fire. But the thing about it, I had to call the fire report to get a report. They said 32 firemen came out, but they didn't talk to me. And I know marijuana does not set something from open containers, containment store on fire. So I know that we, our firemen, just like Obama is giving the policemen less artillery, the firemen, the best firemen I know is in San Diego, they are lovely. And, but I want to make sure that our firemen, these new buildings that they're building, we have one, Station 5 on Howard Street, a brand-new Station 1 or 5. I want to make sure that fire people, when they come out, they talk to the people who have been affected. And I was shocked that they said 32 firemen come out, and I had to find out, do what's going on in that building. So I think this has a lot to do with housing. Often, we think fires create situations where you have to build, and I want to make sure that in these times in San Francisco and the world, that fires are not part of removing people out of the city. But like I say, I hadn't planned on this yet, but you look, this is from the containment store. No marijuana can make something melt like that, you know, a marijuana cigarette. And that is of course tinky from the outfitters that this, they got burned up altogether, but I was able to receive it, take it off the hat, tinky with my target.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members from the public who like to speak in support of the project at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. And the appellant will have up to three minutes to do a rebuttal at this time.
Thank you, President Breed, members of the board. Steve Williams again. The Planning Department has not answered the question. They didn't say anything. And this is the first we've heard of it, that they consider somehow a closure letter annuls the placement on the hazardous waste list? It's not in the brief, there's no citation to any authority, no citation to any statutory provision, and not even in dicta. It amounts to an impermissible and narrowing interpretation which flies in the face of all legal authority, which clearly hold that CEQA is to be interpreted and enforced as broadly as possible to afford the citizens of California the greatest possible environmental protection. The site is on the list, and the statute said that if the site is on the list, it cannot be given a categorical exemption, period. The legislature has not amended the law to state that, hey, once a closure letter issues, it somehow annuls, and that's the city's word, the fact that a site is on the list. It could have easily done that. The Parker-Shattuck case from the First District Court of Appeal, right here, speaks directly to the issue before the board. Read it closely. The city gave the project a cat X. It's on page two of the authority, please, of the opinion. On return, after the writ was granted, the city then issued an initial study and then gave it a mitigated neg deck. The court's ruling is directly on point, and it says that if you're on the Cortez list, does not mandate an EIR. With the same breath, the court says that the sites on the Cortez list may not be granted a categorical exemption. And it was speaking about a site exactly like this site, with two closure And it was speaking about a site exactly like this site with two closure letters, the same closure letters that the city is now claiming somehow exempts it from the law and creates an annulment, the same exact closure letters. And the court puts in its opinion that you cannot issue a cat X for that site. The court makes no mention of the closure letter somehow changing the direct and express language of the statute. We presented a mountain of direct authority that this site on the list may not be granted a cat X. That's what the statute says. None of the multiple applications we put in front of you ask, is there a closure letter? If the city's theory was correct, that would be on there. And finally, these sites are kept on the list indefinitely for a reason. No one knows exactly what's down there. That's the point. And the city itself admits this. The city itself says, one of the possible reasons why the sites remain on the list is because remediation techniques may include capping the site. That's what happened at this firehouse. The site was capped. That a subsequent project, including excavation, would somehow disturb that containment and could expose the public and the environment to hazardous materials. That's why they stay.
Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, this hearing has been held, and item number eighteen is held and is now closed. So items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are in the hands of the board supervisors. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Supervisor Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, thank you for listening to this appeal and to all the people that came out to speak on this item. Just to situate everyone, this firehouse, Station Sixteen, is on Greenwich Street, right next to the famed triangle, about two doors down or three doors down from the Balboa Cafe, smack in the middle of Cow Hollow. It is essentially what we are doing here through the Easter bond is rebuilding an entire firehouse. I know the Fire Department and DPW have gone through many firehouses in each of our districts with the preference first to just simply rehab them. This one did not have that ability. It had to be, or it has to be completely taken down and rebuilt. You know, in terms of the outreach, I am very sympathetic to the neighbors, have met with them a number of times. We have had numerous community meetings, in particular at Moscone Recreation Center a few blocks away. First around the external design, which a number of the neighbors didn't like, which I appreciate neighborhood aesthetics. First was a very modern look, and they came back with some adjustments and made those changes. And then certainly, a lot of the internal designs as well. We've had a number of architectural meetings with the appellant's architects. In my office, DPW has met with them separately as well. On a personal level, you know, I went to a number of the community outreach meetings at Moscone, met with the appellant a number of times. I've actually met with a number of the firefighters inside of Station Sixteen that are not thrilled about the redesign for various reasons, I think in particular, the sleeping quarters. But the reality of this site itself, just from a pragmatic perspective, is that it was decided this firehouse had to be torn down. And when you, the site itself is bound by two streets and buildings on each side. So there's no, the flexibility that we have to make design changes and so forth is very limited, especially when you rebuild a firehouse decades later. The codes that exist now in our laws, which are for good reason, really restrict the ability of DPW or the Fire Department to design around a lot of things that we would like to do. I'm very sympathetic to the neighbors in Evan about losing a light well and things like that. I appreciate the frustration. I would be doing it the same way. You know, we've worked hard to try and facilitate countless meetings to see if there were design changes that could be met. And unfortunately, the answer kept coming back no. And I've been as frustrated as anyone of those results. That being said, we're here today on a CEQA appeal and on that narrow focus alone. And I do not believe that we have valid grounds for a CEQA appeal here. I appreciate Mr. Williams' arguments. You know, the Class Two cat X. I appreciate all the concerns around the Cortez list. This site has been abated. And, you know, in talking with our city attorney, feels comfortable that that abatement and then the subsequent cat X was very appropriate here in this scenario. So again, I appreciate all the concerns over this site. I appreciate the appeal. If I was a neighbor, I'd be incredibly frustrated as well. I am, as a district supervisor, and wish there was a different answer here. But specifically what we're deciding upon today in terms of CEQA appeal, I don't find there to be any grounds. So with that, I'm welcome to entertain any comments, but I would make a motion to move item nineteen and Table Twenty and Twenty-One.
Okay, Supervisor Farrell has made a motion to approve item nineteen and Table Twenty and Twenty-One. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Campos. Seeing no other names on the roster, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Supervisor Farrell.
Aye.
Farrell, aye. Supervisor Marr. Marr, aye. Supervisor Tang.
Aye.
Tang, aye. Supervisor Weiner.
Aye.
Weiner, aye. Supervisor Yi.
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Avalos. Avalos, aye. Supervisor Breed.
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Campos.
Aye.
Campos, aye. Supervisor Christensen.
Aye.
Christensen, aye. Supervisor Cohen.
Aye.
Cohen, aye. There are ten ayes.
Colleagues, the categorical exemption is finally affirmed unanimously. Madam Clerk, can you please go to our other 3:00 PM special order?
Items twenty-two through twenty-five comprise the special order at 3:00 PM for a public hearing of persons interested in the appeal of a categorical exemption from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act issued by the Planning Department on September eighteenth for the twenty-fourteen for the proposed project located at twenty-six Hodges Street. Items twenty-three through twenty-five are the motions affirming and reversing the department's exemption, with item twenty-five directing the preparation of findings. And Madam President, I, the clerk's office is in receipt of a communication from the appellant, Mrs. Melody Marr, requesting a continuance on this item.
Before we move forward, Supervisor Christensen, do you have any comments on the continuance?
I'll just wait until testimony.
Okay. So for this hearing, we will be considering the adequacy, accuracy, sufficiency, and completeness of the planning department's determination that the proposed project at twenty-six Hodges Alley is categorically exempt from environmental review under CEQA. Without objection, we will proceed as follows. It is my understanding that a request for a continuance has been made, and I was wondering before we move forward, is the appellant here with us today? Okay, so before we move forward with that, it appears that we are not interested in moving or continuing this item, so we may need to move forward with reviewing it today.
That's fine.
Okay. So without objection, colleagues, we will proceed as follow. Up to ten minutes for a presentation by the appellant or the appellant representative. Up to two minutes per speaker in support of the appeal. Up to ten minutes for a presentation from the planning department. Up to ten minutes for the project sponsor or their representative. Up to two minutes per speaker in opposition of the appeal. And up to three minutes for rebuttal from the appellant or the appellant representatives. Colleagues, are there any objections to these proceeding in this way? Seeing none, we will move forward. So at this time, I will recognize the appellant or the appellant representative.
Yes, my name is Melody Marr. I am the appellant, and my attorney, Stephen Wood, is here with me as well. Should I, do you want me to just start, or did you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. My, let's see, my family has owned three fifty-eight to three sixty Vallejo Street for over forty-five years, and I am representing them on behalf of this. So we are on Telegraph Hill, and this is a map of Telegraph Hill right here. So the four neighbors are on a cliff that is quite unstable, and it's been unstable for a long time. And I have been working very hard, even before the twenty-six Hodges owner purchased it in twenty-twelve, to stabilize the cliff with the four neighbors. So here are the four neighbors.
And ma'am, when you speak, can you please move the microphone if you want to point something out?
I am so sorry. So twenty-six Hodges, thirty Hodges, three sixty-two Vallejo, three fifty-eight Vallejo. And so we're all either on or adjacent to this cliff, and the cliff is right over here. So my house, let's see. My, okay, thank you. So my house is three fifty-eight, my family's house is three fifty-eight Vallejo Street. It's right at the base of the cliff. Twenty-six Hodges is right on the top. So this is a near vertical cliff, about twenty feet. And so what twenty-six Hodges would like to do is propose expansions. It's a vertical third floor. They're going to close up the first and second floor steers, and the rock slide, landslide area is in the rear, so it is in the variance. And I have told twenty-six Hodges that I will support their project if they work with our engineers to stabilize the cliff, for sure. Okay. So that is the purpose of the continuance because my attorney has, we've come to an agreement with twenty-six Hodges, and this is the agreement, that they, we're both going to have a reciprocal situation where we will both, our engineers and our consultants will go and remove the rocks and stabilize the cliff. The cliff stabilization is very challenging because my house is within several inches at the base of the cliff. So twenty-six Hodges has already come up with two plans. Their engineers came up with two plans that do not work. They didn't tell us that. We hired Katton Shayers, who is John Wallace. He has stabilized the two thousand and seven catastrophic landslide on Broadway and Vallejo Street, which is one block from my house. He was the engineer, that engineering firm does really, really high-end stuff. So they, we feel they can handle this challenge. So we hired them to review twenty-six Hodges, two plans. It didn't work. So now we, we're having them work with twenty-six Hodges to stabilize this cliff as well as the other three neighbors' cliff. So the entire cliff will be stabilized, and that is the purpose of the continuance because we need time for them to get in from this agreement, for them to come access to site. We need them all to come to work on that stabilization plan. So there is an existing hazard. There's twenty-twelve and twenty-fourteen notice of violations. The building department has already come in and they, you know, so there's a third party that has already come in to show that there's a rock slide from the back of twenty-six Hodges neighbor's house at three fifty-eight Vallejo. This shows the amount of rock that's stacked up against my house wall. It's about eight feet. There's also a footing that fell off from thirty Hodges. It's a big footing, and they will need to break that up when they come remove the rocks and all that. I will not, I'm not able to live at home, and that is on the report of Katton Shayers and the structural engineer. So we have a geologico, a geotechnico, and a structural engineer that would love to work with twenty-six Hodges in this project, because it's a high-challenge project. So it does indicate over here that we are of the opinion that the existing conditions along the precipitous rock slope, including twenty-six and thirty Hodges, three sixty-two Vallejo Street, and the lower portion of three fifty-eight, represents a continuing rock slide, rockfall hazard with a high risk to the northwest portion. And it is their opinion that this is a hazardous emergency condition, and they want it done as soon as possible, and all four parties usually get a permit to do that. We also had another engineer, another engineer, a structure to look at the house, and he is also saying that they believe there is a high risk of additional collapse of the escarpment, which could cause further physical damage to Ms. Marr's property and could injure or kill occupants of buildings on either side of the property line. So this is a very different case from, this is a very different case from many other cases that have come before you. I have researched other cases you've seen in Telegraph Hill. The other cases you've looked at are big, empty lots, or there's a lot of access, there's a lot of room. In this case, this is high challenge, and we want them to work with us. We don't feel that, in many cases, they really have. So the cat X was issued because this is a small project. It's a small, single-family house. It's a small project. And so you, the test on whether the cat X, is there an exception to the exemption of a cat X? Yes. It's called the unusual circumstances exception, and it, the California Supreme Court has issued out a decision March, just March, it's called Berkeley Hill Side, and so two-pronged test. The question is, one, are there substantial unusual circumstances in this case? Yes, there are. The project is located on greater than twenty-degree slope. It is on a landslide zone, and I don't know why the building department is saying it's not a landslide zone, because I spoke to Tom Lay at the building department, and he looked at the seismic hazard map, and the four neighbors, or at least three of the neighbors, are on that seismic landslide zone. That is Tom Lay from the building department. There's also the question, what is very unusual about this case that you don't see on Telegraph Hill, is you have a house this close at the base within inches to another house on top that's at the edge of a near vertical unstable slope. That is extremely unusual. You'll see a lot of houses with setbacks in hillsides, lot of setbacks, but never a house on the top with no setback and a house right at the base with no setback. That is high challenge, and I think that is definitely an unusual circumstance. Also, the notice of violations are real hazards. It's not speculation. It's not something that might happen. It happened in twenty-twelve. It happened in twenty-fourteen. I have eight feet of rock stacked up. The rocks are still continuing to fall. It is something, and there was another landslide, also four blocks away. So this is quite, quite serious. And the second test is, is there a reasonable possibility that unusual circumstances will produce a significant effect on the environment? Yes, definitely. All four neighbors are on this cliff. They share this cliff, and it's unstable. And so that, you know, that's just common sense. That's another thing that's unusual about this case. All four neighbors are on an unstable cliff, and that's been documented on the geologico reports and also in a notice of violation. So all four neighbors do have a notice of violation. So even small projects are not exempt from review if there are unusual circumstances. The legislature specifically provided exceptions to categorical exemptions for precisely this case. If this were not the case, small projects could be built on landslide zones, earthquake faults, et cetera, without environmental review, and that is not in the public's interest. I want to address what the planning department is saying. They're saying the building department is going to help you. I have emails, I just gave John Carroll some emails, and the building department, some high-level people have told me, they themselves do not have plan checkers. They don't have the talent to fix a high-challenge slope stabilization scheme like this. So that's why I think Katton Shayers with John Wallace, who is stabilizing the Lombard Street slope failure right now, today, he also did the Broadway Street one, is a good person to work with twenty-six Hodges on this project. Then the planning department goes into, you're protected by the slope act. I looked at the slope act. The slope act does not apply to small projects. So we're going to go under the radar, not only in CEQA, but the slope act, and that is really not in the public's interest. It's not in the neighbor's interest. I'm working to help all four neighbors. I'm not just talking about myself. If my neighbors are all stable, I will be stable. So this is a four neighbor cliff stabilization, and by my making this transparent and scrutiny under scrutiny, we can get a better wall in this high-challenge case. There was some, I believe the project sponsors that, you know, I don't let them remove rocks. We have an agreement to remove rocks. We're going to work with them to do that. I also have a stack of emails at home going two years about whether I delay the project. I never delayed the project. I have like thirty pages of emails at home. If you want them, I can, I can give you those emails. They're saying that it's my CEQA appeal that delays them. No, it's not the CEQA appeal. I will remove the CEQA appeal if they work with my engineers in this high-challenge stabilization scheme. There was a third thing. They're saying two neighbors uphill support them, and that's okay. I asked those two neighbors to talk to twenty-six Hodges about stabilizing the cliff because I want this to work. I was the one that started the stabilization four years ago. So I have no problem with the neighbors supporting twenty-six Hodges because I know they want a stabilized cliff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open it up to public comment for those who want to speak in support of the appeal. If there's anyone who wants to speak in support of the appeal, please come forward. You'll have up to two minutes.
Hello, my name's Larry Edman Juicy, and I stay in District Six. And I know what neighbors, this lady is here talking about neighbor's house being stable, and you know, in San Francisco, neighbors must look out for neighbors, even though they are taught not to, and this taking people are speculation. Just think, Harvey Milk birthday is going to be Friday, this Friday. My house is May fifteenth. The date's Malcolm X, and the queen was the other day, on the eighteen. Speculation and housing, it's everyone's facing this house in question. You can even be rich and someone want to move you out. So it seems like the way she's talking here, today is about neighbors really want to stay in this city, no matter what income you are. There is always something to get over. You know, I was thinking San Francisco new motto ought to really be, I heard that the new cheerleaders are now... new cheerleaders are now the national cheerleaders, but I was a 420 cheerleader. It should be, ain't nothing going on but the rent, you know, because these houses, people building the way they coming in, building and pushing people out and sometime, what are you all going to do, you know? What do our people, you know, one thing, in 68, there was a housing right passed, right after the 65 civil rights to vote and 66 was head start. We really need to know that ordinary people and leaders are standing up for housing across this nation. Habitat for Humanity, because Reagan brought crack cocaine and tried to kill the LGBT with AIDS. He's succeeding with AIDS in the black community. So that was the end our president called a Habitat for Humanity. And we need to build a city that stands for Habitat for all humanity. All of us are none of us. All of us are none. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to speak in support of the appeal at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Now I will recognize the planning department, you will have up to 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, Board President Reed and fellow members of the board. My name is Chris Aspiritu, I'm an environmental planner with the planning department. Joining me today is Sarah Jones, Environmental Review Officer, and Joy Everett, Senior Environmental Planner. We sent you two memos responding to two appeals, appeal letters filed by the appellant. After careful consideration of the appellant's concerns, the planning department continues to find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA. The decision before you today is whether to uphold the department's decision to issue a categorical exemption and deny the appeal or to return the project to the department for additional environmental review. The project site is located on the east side of Hodges Alley at Vallejo Street between Sansom and Montgomery Streets. The site itself contains an existing two-story, approximately 2,300 square foot, single-family residence. The project involves the interior remodel of the existing residence and the vertical addition for a new 460 square foot, third-floor bedroom. The project also includes the expansion of an existing roof deck by adding about 130 square feet of new roof deck space of access from the new third-floor bedroom. Finally, the project would include work to abate the existing notices of violation on the property involving the slope. The department considered whether the project would have significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances, such as historic resource impacts and geotechnical concerns, and none were found. The department issued a categorical exemption and on February 12, 2015, the project underwent a discretionary review hearing before the planning commission. And during the hearing, the project was modified so the proposed third-floor addition was set back farther from the front in order to increase the amount of light cast on Hodges Alley. Also, the roof deck was reduced to align with the adjacent building depths and improved the northern neighbor's privacy at the rear. With those modifications, the planning commission approved the project by a vote of seven to The planning department's responses to the issues raised by the appellant are summarized in two main points. The first issue raised by the appellant concerns administrative procedures. The appellant states that the planning department should not have accepted the application for a new project on 26 Hodges until the existing notices of violation were cleared. This includes a notice of violation issued in 2012 regarding hazardous rocks and mud sliding off the fractured rock slope, as well as a notice of violation in 2014 citing that approximately one cubic yard of rock has detached from the vertical bank shale of rock and is resting against the wall at 358 to 360 Vallejo Street. The planning department is not responsible for abating violations issued by the Department of Building Inspection, or DBI. These issues would be resolved through the building permit review process by DBI. In order to correct the notice of violation on the property, the project sponsor included the abatement of the violation into the building permit, which also includes the proposed addition to the existing residence. This permit was reviewed by the department with the issuance of a categorical exemption and a discretionary review before the planning commission. Whether or not the project sponsor submits two separate permits is not an issue under SEQA. The department is charged with analyzing projects as they are proposed by the sponsor. The appellant's concern regarding the violations do not deal with the physical changes to the existing property as those conditions already exist. Nonetheless, the correction of existing notice of violation on a property is not a SEQA issue. The appellant does not state how this would result in an adverse physical change to the environment and therefore no further response is required. The categorical exemption associated with the permit remains valid even with the abatement of the violations. The second issue raised by the appellant concerns the appropriateness of a categorical exemption. The appellant states that the categorical exemption issued by the department was not appropriate since there were existing unusual circumstances on the project site. More specifically, the appellant claims that there are unusual circumstances due to the project being located on a site with a slope greater than 20% and located with a landslide zone. Further, the appellant states that because the project site sits on the edge of a near-vertical unstable slope with a downslope neighbor's house situated 20 feet below and within inches to the slope, these conditions are not extraordinary, exceptional and an unusual circumstance. The planning department does not consider the property being located on a slope greater than 20% as an unusual circumstance. The topography of San Francisco is hilly and structures located on slopes greater than 20% is a common, is common throughout the city. New construction in additions to existing buildings situated on hills are also a common occurrence within the city. The project site is located on Telegraph Hill, one of the more than 40 hills that define the city's landscape and is not considered an exceptional or an extraordinary circumstance. As part of the SEQA determination, the geotechnical report was prepared for the project. The purpose of this report is to identify any geotechnical issues and to recommend construction practices and techniques to protect structures and neighboring properties. These recommendations are then taken into account during DBI's permit review process. The geotechnical report noted that risks from liquefaction, landslides and other seismic concerns were found to be low at the project site. Also, the project site is not located on a landslide zone. Further, the SEQA determination included analysis regarding rock slope stabilization issues that were specific to the project site. During SEQA review, a supplemental geotechnical report was prepared for the proposed project, which identified an alternative method for stabilizing the slope located at the rear of the property and related to abating the notice of violation. The implementation of the supplemental geotechnical report's recommendations would be subject to further review and approval by DBI. Now to provide you with more information with regards to geotechnical considerations, DBI would review the geotechnical report and supplemental report and during DBI's review process would ensure that the proposed project would comply with all applicable sections of the San Francisco Building Code. DBI would also require that the geotechnical report include a determination as to whether monitoring should be done for adjacent buildings and streets during construction. The final building plans would be reviewed by DBI, which would determine additional site-specific reports, if site-specific reports would be required. Furthermore, the project site is subject to the Slope Protection Act adopted by the board in 2008. This ordinance created procedures for additional review and slope stability for properties within a certain mapped areas and established, and established a structural advisory committee for review of permit application with this, of permit reviews in this area. In summary, the appellant has not presented substantial evidence that would support the conclusion that there are unusual circumstances that justify removing the project from a Class I categorical exemption. Furthermore, the appellant has not presented substantial evidence that there is a reasonable possibility of significant environmental impacts due to unusual circumstances. The categorical exemption determination complies with the requirements of SEQA and the project is appropriately exempt from environmental review. Therefore, I urge you to uphold the department's exemption and deny the appeal. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we will hear from the project sponsor. You will have up to 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, Jody Knight from Ruben Junius &amp; Rose on behalf of the project sponsor. I'll be quick, the staff did a great job giving the basics of this project. As you heard, the project involves a small addition to a modest, single-family home. It's about a 407, 407 square foot, third-floor addition, 48 square foot side addition to the second floor and then slope stabilization, which you've heard about. 26 Hodges and 358 Vallejo, Ms. Mar's property, share a slope despite the fact that both properties have responsibility for the slope. 26 Hodges has taken it upon themselves to fix the slope, pay all the costs and undertake all the slope work and they're ready to move ahead with that. They've been prevented from doing that so far by Ms. Mar's opposition to the project, including the present SEQA appeal. In addition to doing the work between 26 Hodges and 358 Vallejo, the owners of 26 Hodges are going to pay the cost of repairing the slope at 30 Hodges, which is the property to the north. The owner of 30 Hodges, who's supportive of the project and really anxious for that slope work to move ahead, is here today. If you have any questions for her, she'd be happy to address those. The owners of 26 Hodges are also coordinating with this property to the south to help them fix their property and so 26 Hodges is trying to fix all four slopes and they're ready to move ahead and do that as soon as this appeal is concluded. They've been directed by DBI to go ahead and pull the permit for the slope work, which they did, but they can't move ahead with that until after the SEQA appeal hearing. They put together a team that includes a geotechnical engineer Frank Rollo, geologist Lou Gilpin, who are absolute experts in their field, Brent Harris, who's a specialty contractor, who's also expert in these projects. Mr. Rollo is here today if you have any questions about the slope work. We also have the architect here if you have any questions. As you've heard and as you know, DBI will thoroughly vet any slope proposal that is submitted and make sure that it's appropriate for the work. In addition, we already have an expert team assembled that will work with the city to make sure that the best solution is proposed and implemented, but they can't do that until we get through this hearing. Therefore, I would ask for your support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so at this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment for those who would like to speak in opposition of the appeal. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak in opposition of the appeal at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. And now I will allow up to three minutes for a rebuttal from the appellant. Ma'am, would you like to, ma'am, would you like to provide a rebuttal?
Yes, my attorney Stephen Witt is here and he's going to speak on that.
Okay, so you'll have up to three minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members, supervisors. It's a lot of attempt here to shift responsibility off your shoulders. SEQA is the law. Slope Protection Act is an additional law. SEQA requires that if there's an environmental hazard, there's processes that we go through. I've spoken to all the people, Mr. Hinchin, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Reardon, or Reardon, and what they say is that they want the private parties to solve this. I'm here to tell you, I submitted an agreement two months ago. I was batted back and forth between two law firms. Still, no signed agreement. We're here, ready, willing, able to solve the problem, to give access to 358 Vallejo, to do the work. By the way, Mr. Wallace told me in speaking to Mr. Gilpin, that Mr. Gilpin thanked him for coming into the project because the project as planned originally was meant to save money, save time, to expedite the process. That does not protect the people on the slope in that area, not just Ms. Mar, but the people below her. Now I know that the planning commission would like to say that, well, you know, we'll let DBI take care of it. No, the law says you have to look at it. And the law says you've got clear and convincing evidence, clear and convincing, that there's a serious, serious, serious problem. Okay? Now if you want to ignore that and kowtow to privilege and wealth, okay? There's also courts in the city. But I'm here to tell you that this is a dangerous situation. Read the letters from Mr. Wallace, from Mr. Cart, from Mr. Carden. They make it very clear, it's a serious, serious problem. All we want is to have the folks here deal in good faith, provide their consultants. I was there waiting for a consultant to come two months ago. He never showed up. Lot of misinformation here, folks. Lot of misinformation and it really makes me upset and I hope that the city, I hope the city government does what it's supposed to do under SEQA and doesn't defer responsibility to protect not only Ms. Mar, but all the people below. That's your duty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, colleagues, this item has been held and is now closed and in the hands of the Board of Supervisors. So Supervisor Christiansen.
Oh dear. So, the one thing that I think we all agree on is that the stability of the cliffs in Telegraph Hill is critical, not only to the project sponsor's property, not only to the project opponent, but also to a number of residents that surround it. We have a history of cliff failures around Telegraph Hill. Not only is the rock there somewhat fragile, but we had quarry faces on the east side of the hill. So I was sitting here making a list of the failures that have occurred just in the last 10 to 20 years. In the 1990s, the city had to pull a 20-unit apartment building off the side of the hill after the land below it eroded. In 2007, there was a large rock slide on Broadway just a block away from this location. In 2010, some friends of mine had to do a very similar stabilization project at great expense just two blocks away on Montgomery Street. Currently, the city is spending millions of dollars to stabilize cliffs below Lombard and Pioneer Park. So yes, I think we can agree, this is a serious condition and it doesn't just affect the two properties represented here today or the three properties, but a number of residences below and adjacent to the project in question. So I think it is very, very serious and that we need to stop arguing and figure out how we're going to fix this because it does impact so many people. The project sponsor's engineers have come up with a solution to stabilize the slope in a way that is respected, in a way that's accessible. It is similar to the other stabilization project on Montgomery with which I am familiar. I think in the case of the SEQA review, if we are looking at the venues, at the bodies that should be reviewing this project, what I heard from Ms. Mar has to do with the nature of the project itself, that the configuration and the design has already been heard and unanimously approved at the planning department. In terms of the stabilization method, the Department of Building Inspection is going to review that thoroughly and evaluate that stabilization plan before permits are issued. So I feel that is better dealt with in that body. Given the legal constraints of SEQA, I cannot find adequate justification to support the appeal. So I'm moving that we affirm the determination by the planning department that the proposed project at 26 Hodges is categorically exempt from environmental review, that we approve item 23 and that we table items 24 and 25.
Supervisor Christiansen has made a motion to approve item 23 and table 24 and Supervisor Christensen has made a motion to approve Item 23 and Table 24 and 25. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Farrell. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Supervisor Farrell. Farrell, aye. Supervisor Mar, Mar, aye. Supervisor Tang?
Aye.
Tang, aye. Supervisor Weiner?
Aye.
Weiner, aye. Supervisor Yi?
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Avalos?
Aye.
Avalos, aye. Supervisor Breed?
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Campos?
Aye.
Campos, aye. Supervisor Christensen?
Aye.
Christensen, aye. Supervisor Cohen?
Aye.
Cohen, aye. There are 10 ayes.
Colleagues, the categorical exemption is finally affirmed unanimously. Okay, this brings us to the end of our agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any other items before us today?
That concludes our business for today, Madam President.
Colleagues, thank you. We adjourn.
Thank you.